Zoning Board Meeting, please rise for the Pledge to the Flag. Flag is right over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our May 9th zoning board meeting. I'll introduce our board members. To your far right, we have Mr. Joseph DiVannudo.
Mr. Gary Kestenbaum.
Mr. Kevin Abrams. Mr. Andrew Giacamaza. I'm Karen Unger, our attorney. Mr. Michael Donnelly. He's getting ready to leave because we're going to switch lawyers. Ms. Kelly Norton will be our lawyer for the first public hearing. Our next meeting will be on June 13th. We meet always on the second Wednesday of each month. There's no executive session tonight. Has everyone read the minutes from last month?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, motion is sustained. No new business tonight, no action on decisions. We do have a change to the agenda on the public hearings. There will be no public hearing for Pulver. He has requested that he's going to go before the planning board and then we will re-notice that when he's ready to return. So if you're here for Mr. Pulver's application, you can either stay or leave, your choice. Alright, public hearings. The first one is the Shops at Woodbury. Our attorney is Ms. Kelly Norton. This is a public hearing for area variances and interpretation. Applicant proposes to construct a commercial center and hotel having a lot area of 9.65 acres. The height of the proposed hotel is 60 feet high, whereas pursuant to Section 310-7 Bulk Regulations, the maximum height permitted is 35 feet. Furthermore, the applicant requires an interpretation as to whether a hotel is permitted as part of a commercial center pursuant to Section 310-49(c)(3). In the alternative, the applicant is requesting an area variance from the minimum lot area required pursuant to Section 310-6F. Said property is located in the IB zoning district off of the intersection of State Route 32 and Losi Lane in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 225 Block 1 Lots 34.1 and 34.2. I see our applicant is already ready to go here. Would you please state your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Dominic Cordisco, attorney for the applicant from the law firm of Drake Loeb in New Windsor. And I'm with Steve Esposito from Esposito and Associates.
Alrighty. Before you begin, I have a question. There is a consolidation of the two lots, 34.1 and 34.2. Is that pending or is that done? Or could you explain that?
It's pending.
It's pending, yeah.
It's pending.
Correct.
Do you know when, is there a holdup or is it just in the normal process of being?
I think the question is, and again, it's part of, was going to be part of our presentation, is there are two existing tax parcels and then there's also what we call the remnants of Losi Lane and Melody Lane.
Could you, is there a microphone you could speak with?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry about that. There's two existing tax parcels, one in the front, which we used to call, refer to as JJ Woodbury, and then the tax parcel in the back, which was the Budget Inn and then after that, the Cabela's. There's also Losi Lane and Melody Lane, remnants of those two right-of-ways. Those, there was a land swap with Cabela's about a year and a half ago, which transferred title to Losi Lane, where they took a couple pieces of land from Cabela's at the time. That's occurred. We don't know why the county tax department hasn't caught up to that in terms of line weight. So if you go on the county records, they still show up.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. You may, I just want to clarify. So what you're looking for, you're saying that the building inspector said that a hotel is not part of a commercial center, correct?
That's correct, in his opinion.
Okay, so you're looking for an interpretation as to whether you can include a hotel as part of a commercial center at this location?
That's correct.
And in the alternative, if we say no, then issue it by basically a special permit and address the lot coverage?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because permits are allowed in the IBs district, which is, this is, property is within.
Alright, thank you. You want to start with your presentation?
No, that's, that's fine. We'll be brief if we may. This site, I'm sure everyone is familiar, to the extent that you are, that it was formally proposed and approved for the Cabela's project. And of course, that sub-project was stopped, as my client had said, not at the 11th hour, not at the 12th hour, but maybe at 12:02, in the sense that, you know, construction had commenced and then Cabela's decided not to proceed at that point. And so, given the current economic climate, you know, and the disadvantage of perhaps big-box development, my client is pursuing a mixed commercial development that includes a hotel, retail establishments, and restaurants proposed at this site. The site needs variances primarily driven by the fact that takings have occurred, so that the Exit 131 redesign could proceed. So New York State has acquired property, so that has increased the amount of variances that are necessary in order for this project to proceed at this time. Steve Esposito can certainly walk you through the site to configure everything so that you and the public are aware of what we're seeking.
So Dominic said this site does have a bit of a history, and a history with this board as well. We represented Cabela's and at the time, the site was 13.56 acres. We were required to get relief from lot coverage, building height, and side yard. At that time, the zoning board of appeals in the Village of Woodbury granted those, that relief to Cabela's. At the time, during that design process, we designed the entire project within the, what we called the south ramp, configuration of the 131 ramp, which is no longer going to be constructed at this point. But then most recent, and that was a taking of approximately 2.43 acres in order to construct the southbound ramp. Recently, at the end, beginning of last fall, the DOT reached out to my client, current owner, and said, "We'd like to take about another 1.5 acres of land to construct a 204-car park-and-ride." And that's what this is. So when you look at your plans, you'll see that the parking spaces in the lower part of the plan are black and the upper ones along the northeast corner are red and those are really going, that's now land either owned and fee by the DOT or permanent easement. And that's the park-and-ride that they're currently constructing. After these two takings, we went from 13.5 acres to 9.6 acres. The DOT took four of probably the most expensive and developable acres from the county and this community as well. The proposed, Dominic said, you know, the big-box error is pretty much gone, so we're looking at a mixed-use development that's going to consist of a hotel, approximately 130 rooms, 16,000 square feet of restaurant, 18,000 square feet of retail, and 9,000 square feet of fast food. And I think that will do it. Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Now, Steve, I'm really concerned about the height of this hotel.
Oh, wait a minute. Let's decide first if we're going to allow this hotel. It's two parts here.
I know, but she's right.
We have to decide first if we're going to allow.
If we allow the hotel, then he can put the 60-foot there.
Well, he's also applying for an area variance, so if the interpretation doesn't permit the hotel, he's allowed to have a second principal use. So, setting aside the fact of the minimum lot area for the hotel, if the interpretation goes the way the applicant is looking, they're also requesting a height variance for the hotel, which is what Kevin is talking about, as well as a variance from the maximum lot coverage. So those three things are all part of, part one.
Well, I don't think the maximum lot coverage needs to be addressed if it's part of a commercial center.
But the commercial center still restricts the maximum lot coverage to 65 percent, I think it is, for the whole property.
Oh, okay.
And we've slightly exceeded that at 72.5 per head.
But it's a small percentage of what you're asking for.
That's correct.
As far as lot size.
Correct. In terms of numbers, it is the smallest variance, yes.
So what's your argument for allowing a hotel as part of the commercial center?
As in our, in our written request, you know, Gary had made an interpretation that a hotel, now just, if I could, just, a commercial center has to have one or more permitted uses that are allowed in the hamlet zone, HB zone. And there's a number of uses that are allowed in that zone. It's a great zone, but one of them is not a hotel. In the IB zone, a hotel is permitted under special use. So what, from our perspective, what we, and if you look at the definition of a commercial zone, and if you look at the purpose of the IB zone, nowhere is the, nowhere is it restricted that a permitted or special use permit in the IB zone, the underlying zone, is prohibited or from a commercial center. So what our initial position is, is that it's not prohibited and therefore not restricted and could be allowed in a commercial center. If the commercial center, if you interpret that as correct or you agree with our position on that, then the lot area is not an issue because commercial centers are exempt from lot area.
So basically, it says the laws, doesn't say you can do it, but it doesn't say you can't do it.
Correct. Basically, it says they're not, their argument, I think, is hotels are not specifically excluded.
That's correct.
So, and, and they are permitted by special permit, so therefore.
Personally, I, I think a hotel is, is needed in the community.
Gary, you have something?
I wanted to ask Kelly a question.
Sure.
Kelly, is the village, this is, this is the village code or the town code that we're talking about?
This is the village code.
Is the village code, in terms of commercial zones, written with schedules of permitted uses? Or is it written to, as the gentlemen say, allow anything that is not prohibited? Because that's what they're saying. They say, "Well, it's not prohibited." Well, an airport isn't prohibited on the schedule, but you can't put it there.
Well, if.
It's typically, these are the lists, what this village has is a table of bulk and use requirements. So it does permit specific uses in different zones. What they're saying is that the hotel is permitted in this zone. It's permitted to happen in the IB zone, as is a commercial center. What their argument is, is that a commercial center is one or, consists of one or more uses permitted in a different zone, but also that the hotel is permitted in this zone. So just because it says one or more uses permitted in the HB zone doesn't restrict it from also including uses that are permitted in the IB zone.
I get it.
Thank you.
If I may? I'm glad you get that.
My view on that is, is different, alright? I don't disagree that a hotel is not a permitted use in an IB zone, as is a commercial center. The two are allowed to be there, okay, but as separate entities, alright? That's my read of it, alright? It's very specific as to that the commercial center has one or more hamlet business sorts of businesses there, okay? And let's say, you know, it had four, but it's, to me, it's, the way that's worded seems to indicate that the hamlet business is what goes into commercial center. And alongside, as a separate entity, could be a hotel. But I don't see that the two of them are put in there together. The wording is, is pretty straightforward and in listing the things in the industrial business, it says hotel, but when you get in the hamlet business, there is no hotel and I believe Steve said that before. So to me, hamlet business drives the commercial center, as I see it.
So if you were to prove it, it would have to be as a special permit?
Well, I think it's a special permit regardless, but the thing, as I see it, it has to be a subdivision and it's two separate entities.
Well, just one correction. You don't actually have to have a subdivision. You are permitted to have two principal uses on one lot, so long as the bulk requirements for both are met. But with regard to the other part of your comment, that, that's the issue that's before the board.
Yes.
Any other comments from the board? Do you want to discuss the 60-foot height? And we'll discuss everything at the end.
How many stories is the hotel?
Should we do, should we do one thing at a time?
Well, we can't make a decision. There's no secret.
Okay.
Today's hotel world, you know, the two-story hotels are not marketable. I mean, you're looking at four-to-six-story hotels, depending on the, on the, on the chain. We envision it to be, you know, we, we have a study done by a leading hotel analyst and, you know, we've determined that there's a significant need in the area for hotels, so they recommended somewhere between a 20, 120 to 150-room hotel. We're looking at 130 units. That's what we based our minimum lot area on, because there's an equation that you have to apply. So we're looking at somewhere between four-to-six stories, four-to-five stories probably.
But my big concern is emergency services. I mean, I don't think there's a, a, I know there's not a fire truck in Woodbury that's going to reach those, those floors. And that would be my big concern. Unless you're going to buy him one.
We'll contribute. And again, we're, you know, looking at what we would say, you know, considering a higher-end hotel, you know, we've got to be able to, be able to provide the ability to construct a four-to-five-story hotel.
But you're looking for a 73 percent variance.
Yeah, it's, it's quite significant.
That's a lot.
Steve, the height consideration is because that's the type of hotel that you want to design to go in there or it's to make the footprint smaller? You go up instead of out?
It's actually for the type of hotel we're looking to attract.
I have concerns about the view from 32, from, I mean, 17, yeah.
We have nothing comparable in this town, that size. And then it's up on a hill.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the optics.
The Empire State Building in Woodbury. I mean, I, I get it, because the higher it is, the more room you can put in there, the more money it is.
I don't necessarily have a problem with allowing a hotel there. I do have a problem with the height. Because they can't protect, they can't protect the people that'll be in there.
Yeah, I called the Central Valley Fire Department. They said they, if they were right up against the building with the ladder, they might be able to get to the top. But, you know, there's always cars parked and whatever, so it probably wouldn't make it, you know. It was, because it's a concern.
I have a que, you were on the fire department, so you would understand this much better than I do. There are lots of hotels in the United States that aren't accessible by fire truck. So what, my question, I'm asking from a technical standpoint, why does one, why should one care about that?
Why shouldn't the, why shouldn't the people that are renting those have protection if they need to get out? And I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay for a fire truck to service that building.
I guess what I'm saying is, in New York City, there are untold number of high-rises without fire engines that reach the top, but they have protocols, methods by which people would get out in the event of fire. I'm just trying to understand why.
If the fire department gives us a letter that they can adequately handle that, then I'd be okay with it. But I don't think they can.
It's a volunteer fire department, you know, these are not.
Right, they're not like city.
No, it's not like city firemen. I'm assuming this hotel's going to be serviced with like sprinkle system and whatnot?
Absolutely.
So I think the real danger would be just. Oh, sorry.
And really though, I think the planning board would decide as far as, I just would like to know. I have no problem with allowing a hotel on the property, but unless all those answers are, I would have a real problem with the variance, because it is 73 percent.
Just so the board knows, seeker is being handled by the planning board, so no action can be taken tonight. It's on for the applicant's presentation and for public hearing.
Kelly, if I may, the interpretation is included in that as well? Or we can do the interpretation, but not the other?
It's all included as one.
All included as one, alright. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have just one quick one on Melody Lane.
Can you hear me now? Yes? Sorry.
Steve, Melody Lane, that's about a half an acre, 0.4 acre, something like that. Your 9.6 or whatever acres includes that.
Correct.
That in there? And I know that that was like offered, as long as there was considerable work accomplished, that you would have gotten Melody Lane for Cabela's, but once that wasn't done, then it reverts back to, I guess it would be to Village?
Back to the Village. And we've contacted the Village Board and are going to hopefully be on an agenda either this month or next month to rekindle that agreement.
Alright.
Any other board comments? Thank you very much. I'm going to entertain public comment. Unless you have something else to add.
Yeah, just one clarification, if I may. It would be helpful to provide us with guidance moving forward in connect.
How's that?
Everybody knows who Jessica is. Sorry about that. I'll, I'll lean over some more. It would provide us with additional clarification if you could consider the interpretation tonight. My understanding is, is that interpretations actually are not subject to seeker and it would allow us to at least have some direction as to what we need to do or to consider in potentially moving this project forward.
The review for seeker that was noticed by the planning board was noticed as a coordinated review, which included that. I think you can try and take some idea from the conversations of the ZBA, but as we've proceeded, it would have to be together.
So we can't break up the, the decision and the interpretation?
But you're going forward, so I don't think it's going to be holding you up that much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the first row who would like to speak to the topic of the Shops at Woodbury? Second row? Third row? Fourth row? Anyone? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir. Just a reminder that the public hearing will remain open, so if you change your mind and want to talk at the next meeting, you can. Please introduce yourself to the.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Bizidlow. I'm an attorney for, excuse me, Millwood Place LLC. Now the green light's on, I'll start again. Okay, very good. My name is Charlie Bizidlow. I'm an attorney for Millwood Place LLC, the owners of the Hampton Inn over in Woodbury Center. Our concern about the overall project here, and I think it's important for the board to realize this, is that our only access out of our site, as well as the other tenants in the Woodbury, Woodbury Center Shopping Center, is through the intersection that this development will use. So though I'm not sure my client's property was on the mailing list for notice at a hearing, it's only a weird set of geometry that causes that. You know, we have to use the driveway, we have to use this intersection. So our concern about overdevelopment of the site is very, is very intense and very legitimate. I, I do understand, if I'm comprehending what the application here is, two parts. One is the interpretation and the review of the building inspector's letter, and then there's a series of variances. If I could just comment briefly about both of those, realizing that the hearing's going to continue in the future. The, we believe the building inspector was correct in his interpretation of, in his ruling, I should say, of, of the code. Commercial centers specifically talk about that you have to use a specific type of uses in order to have a commercial center. Hotels are not in there. The Woodbury Code is an inclusive and not exclusive code, so the idea is that if you want to have a commercial center, you have to have more than one of the specific uses listed in the code. Woodbury also has a fairly intensive section in the code for hotel development. Talks about a minimum of five acres and then another 2,500 square feet of lot area for each additional room. For, I, I hear the applicant mentioned that this is going to be 130-room hotel. Can't do the math that quickly. I know for about 100-room, 105-room hotel, that results in a requirement of like almost eight, eight and a half acres. The whole site's only nine acres. So what the applicant's really asking to do here is to say that, well, because I want a, I want a hotel, rather than meet the lot coverage required in the code for 130-room hotel, I'm going to have a pad restaurant or I'm going to have a retail building. And as long as I put those on the property, I don't have to have that, what may be 10 or 11 acres for this 130-room hotel. I could have nine acres instead. And I can, nine acres, I could put the hotel plus retail plus pad restaurants. I, I think it results in a severe overuse of the site. Now, I think the board needs to uphold the building inspector's interpretation, because it's not that complicated of a read of the code that doesn't allow hotels in a commercial center. Or it doesn't allow hotels to take advantage of the reduced lot area that a commercial center would give you. Now with that, the applicant's free to apply for variance from the required lot area, but that's going to result in a very significant variance. Again, for 130-room hotel, I don't know, I think that's going to be up there in 10 acres, 11, 12 acres of land required for that big of a hotel. That's just one, that's a very significant variance. The second thing, as I've heard the board discuss a little bit tonight too, the height variance is a very significant variance, going, going to 60 feet from a 35-foot requirement. No other building in the town like that, no other building contemplated like that. I think there are some significant health and safety issues associated with that. And plus, again, results in a larger hotel on this footprint, results in more traffic, results in more use of that intersection. The third thing that the applicant, I believe, is looking for here is lot coverage. I think the lot coverage is allowed at 65 percent, you're looking at close to 74 percent. Again, it just allows overdevelopment of this site. And it's still a large site, you know, nine acres, don't really see why the applicant couldn't propose a mix of uses that would fit into, fit the code and fit those nine acres. So, that all said, and I think your counsel's already told you, I don't think, you know, I think the board already realizes you can't make a decision about this tonight. There's a coordinated seeker aspect going on about the project. I believe the town board, probably as soon as tomorrow night, is about to pass a moratorium on these type of applications. It's not in effect tonight, but in 24 hours, it probably will be. That's another, perhaps, bar to this board making a determination. And then the board should also consider that we believe this site has deed restrictions on it that prevent hotel development. And though that might not be a bar to you granting the permit for this site, it's something for the board to consider. I believe there may even be actually two anti-hotel deed restrictions associated with the property. One that deals with the, the fee that was transferred to the current owner, and the other one may go back to the Harriman family deed restriction against hotels that affects a lot of the properties in the village. So those are my initial comments tonight. I look forward to giving some more when the applicant continues at some point in the future, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure, Gary.
May I ask the applicant one question? It dawned on me, but was it Charlie? Is that, is that your name?
Yes.
When Charlie brought up.
No, he's not the applicant.
He's not the applicant.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't say that right. The point that Charlie brought up, I wanted to ask the applicant a question.
Okay, gotcha.
Relating to the memo, to Dennis Lindsay's memo of March 15th, I think we all have this?
Yes, we do.
And in speaking about the possible request for significant relief from the ZBA, Dennis listed parking, and if I can read this, he said, "The calculation for parking identifies a deficiency in the required number of spaces. The degree of the deficiency may change based on the ZBA interpretation, but a variance or waiver will be needed." There was no discussion earlier on the variance for parking. Can you speak to how significant that is? Or how, and how deficient?
Well, I can tell you that.
No, it's excessive for the hotel.
Under the current development scenario, the required.
Under the current development scenario, the required parking is 611 spaces. We're proposing in this layout 543 spaces, which would be, it's a deviation of approximately 11 percent of what is required by the bulk table, or bulk requirements. But the planning board has the ability to waive up to 25 percent of parking requirements. Not uncommon in the mixed-use development, can we do a parking analysis to show that the proposed parking will meet the peak demands for parking? And your code has that built in there because they recognize this type of development in particular is shared parking because there are off-peak requirements.
That was the next question, are you, of those spaces, the 500-plus spaces you're speaking, would those possibly be shared with the other commercial ventures on the site?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
If we're talking about the parking, you have a huge surplus under the hotel listed on your table, on your site table. And then you have others that are less than half of what is required. For example, the hotel says 135 required, you're providing 228, that's a 69 percent increase. Yet if you look at the fast food restaurant, 72, seven are required, you're only providing 32, and that's a 58 percent decrease of what's, you know, a negative amount. Why is there such a disparity?
That's a good question. What will happen is during our preparation of the parking analysis, these will be designated with a little more detail in terms of what the use is and what will be available for that particular use.
Are you basing the parking on a 60-foot hotel or on a 35-foot hotel with the number of rooms? What number of rooms are you basing your parking on?
We base it on the number of rooms.
So the 130 rooms is this 60-foot building?
The, what we're proposing right now is, for this analysis, we're proposing 130 rooms with a peak staff of 20 and an average staff of, I believe, 10 or 11. And that's where we determine what the parking requirements are gonna be-
For the 60-foot building?
For that facility. Whether it's 60 foot or 35 feet, we're still anticipating the, using the 130 for the analysis.
Yeah, please do. I'm confused.
When I read about this parking thing, it said one for each room and one for every two employees. So that would be, what, 140 parking spaces for the hotel? And if you're gonna have 20 during a peak time, or do you go by some kind of average? Just curious.
I apologize, it's 10 on the larger shift.
10, alright, so it'd be five for that, alright.
Alright, we good?
We good.
Board? Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak to the shops at Woodbury? Alright, so do I need to make a motion to carry this over?
I'll make a motion, we carry this over to the June 13th meeting. And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we'll be meeting, seeing you again in June.
Thank you. And once they get that new configuration done down there, it's gonna be a breeze. So they say.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Next on the, excuse me, next on the agenda is a public hearing, Sofa, for an area variance to permit the installation of a 6-foot high solid chain link fence in a front and side yard where as pursuant to Section 146-5A B and 146-7A, the maximum height permitted in a front and side yard is four feet high and 50 percent solid. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at 14 Pheasant Run in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 247 Block 2 Lot 5. Is the applicant present? Yes, would you like to go to the podium, please? Introduce yourself, thank you. Before you begin, I just want to, oh, did you want to say something? Oh, okay. Alright, so what we have, for this public hearing is, we have an applicant who made a very impassioned plea, has unleashed large dog entering from the neighbor's home, has chased their children, they're scared, they're petrified, traumatized. The neighbor has said that they will possibly buy a second dog. Photos were included of a very large dog. If you could elaborate on that and then describe what you would like to do?
First, thank you very much. I'm not just talking on a mic, so I'll try to-
Okay. Did you state your name, please, for the record?
Sure, my name is Bashy Sofa. Okay. When we moved here at this house, the dog wasn't there yet, so we didn't have the problem. If we would see the dog that time, we would maybe buy the house. It happened afterwards, and since the story, when the dog was on my property and chased after my kids, they are like afraid to go outside alone. They are, our life has changed. They don't want to be outside, they're holding, they want to be just inside the house. And they're like, they have like daily torture from the dog. Every day they go out to the bus, they look at the side, the dog is not there. When it happened, the dog was inside the house, under the door, the glass door. They saw the dog.
On your property?
It was at his house, the dog. Under the door, you know, the glass door by the garage, next to the garage, that's where it was. And children were outside in front of my house. The dog saw them and he came out. I don't know how it happened, but he opened the door and he ran out. So they lost their trust. Every time they see the dog in the, even they see it through the glass door, it's like it's there. They're so afraid. They're looking every time to the door to see if it's there when they go to the bus, when they come back, they're afraid to go to the bus to come home.
Has the dog, the dog has been on your property?
It ran after them. They ran home, it ran after them, it was in front of my, not on my property, at my door. I had to like shut the door on him, he shouldn't come in. I was right there when they came in, running. My two-year-old was on the front, ready to go out with me. She was like frozen, she couldn't move. I had to pull her in, give, pull the door, and the dog stayed outside like 10, 15 minutes, wandering around. I didn't know that I have to call the police. So meanwhile-
Did you tell the neighbor?
Then my neighbor across called me saying that his boy's supposed to come home, and she saw the dog on my property walking around. So I told them, maybe you have the number, I didn't have the number from the neighbor. Maybe you can call them. That's when they came to take it. So since then, my children are like, they're living like in a torture, I know, like in a traumatized. They're like, they're so afraid of the dog. When they see by the door inside that house, they come to run to me, the dog is here. Where's the dog? They're afraid it's gonna jump out again. They don't trust it anymore.
Have you spoken to the neighbor since the dog has been on your property? And asked them to please keep their dog on their property?
Yeah, I called them that day. And the neighbor said, why didn't you call the police? So I said, listen, I just want to tell you what happened. So he said, we're gonna watch, it shouldn't happen again. But at the same time, my children, they have the fear already. Because it was on my property, they have the fear.
Has it happened again since you-
It didn't happen again, no.
It didn't?
But the dog is outside, they're afraid to go outside. They're afraid to use the grounds. They're afraid to be around on my property when they see the dog at the next door, next door's house. In their property, it's free. When it goes on the street, it has a-
But does the dog come over to your property?
It doesn't come over, but my children are really afraid now because it wasn't on my property. They are very afraid that it shouldn't happen. Now it doesn't, but you can never know with a dog what can happen. And they had this fear, it's like they're so afraid, they don't want to go outside when the dog is outside. Even though it's on his property, they don't want to go outside. They're like in prison the whole day, in my house. And I'm also afraid of it, I tell you the truth, I'm also afraid. I'm afraid to be outside in that yard where I see the dog, I'm afraid it should come running over. It's a very big dog, and it's like, it's like, for them, it's like a lion, you know?
Do they have like an electric fence?
Nothing around, no. They don't have, but now even electric fence wouldn't help because they're so scared when they see it, they don't trust anymore the dog.
So you're saying the dog was on your property once or twice, or?
It was on my property once.
Okay.
It happened across the street on my neighbor.
Okay.
Also entered their house. When the neighbor said, this is not gonna happen again, then it went to my house afterwards. So it's like-
So since then, the dog has not-
The dog is on his property.
Has not been on the property, but the fact that you can see it is frightening?
That's what it is, exactly.
Okay.
That's it.
That's why you want a 6-foot solid fence?
On one side where they can see the dog, I don't want to be, it should be exposed to the dog. They're very afraid. They're afraid to go outside and play. And it's our small children, I have three small children, a two and a four and a five. And why shouldn't they enjoy the nice grass and the nice weather, you know? It's beautiful outside. And they're very scared. It's like I'm abusing, they're getting like abused from being inside the whole day and not going, you know, for the dog. If I can help them with the fence, I would be very happy, you know? I'm trying to make them comfortable, that's it. They should be relaxed outside, and they should play calmly. And I want to be in good terms with my neighbor, I don't want to bother him, you know? This, everything is peacefully and harmony. They can play outside, they can sit outside, they don't see the dog. The dog can be free on their property, you know, and and they can, anybody can be relaxed. That's it.
And how long have you lived there?
Two years. About, yeah.
How long, how long is it since they've watched the dog?
The story happened this winter, like about, maybe this winter, like about half a year ago? But they're still so frightened. And I really can't help them too much. Just leave them where they want to go, you know?
Anyone on the board have questions for Ms. Sofa?
How old are the children?
Two, four, and five?
Two, four, and five.
Do they play in the backyard ever?
They play all over, but they, they see the dog, it's finished, they're playing. One day I was, I wanted to go outside with them, so I told my daughter to wait at the door, I'm coming. She runs, and the dog is here. I was sure the dog is here, so I come to run, and I ask her, where's the dog? Huh?
No.
In the whole yard?
Just one on the side, where they can see the dog, just one side.
So that doesn't prevent the dogs from coming over?
They shouldn't see it, and the dog wouldn't jump over like that, has to go down to the road and then go around. If it won't help, I'll make it in the front also. But now, meanwhile, they shouldn't be exposed to it. They should be relaxed. It's a lot of money, and I would nick around the whole house, but it's a really big expense. It's a lot of money, and I can't afford it now. I'm trying to make it minimize, you know, the least, to make them comfortable. If we have more money, maybe we're gonna do it all around. Maybe in the front, I'll just do an open one, but the side of the dog, usually doesn't pass my road, usually, goes the other way, like walking, whatever. Only about the sides, always that side, the parking lot from the neighbor. It's always there, you know, going to the, the neighbors' daughters come up from school, so the dog runs to them, you know? It's like the side where the dog is always, it's on my side.
Have you talked to the dog control about the dog running?
Yeah, I spoke once. They told me that, I asked them about a fence, what fence will help for the dog? So she said that for this size of a dog, only a 6-foot fence would keep it from not jumping over. 4-foot wouldn't help. If it wants to jump over, it would jump over 4-foot. She has dogs in the- In her, and she says this kind of dogs can jump over 4-foot. She told me the only thing I can do is make a fence that's enough high so it doesn't, it can't come to my property.
Quick question, ma'am?
Sure.
If you put up a 6-foot fence and the dog can't jump over it, but it only goes down one side on your diagram, the dog can walk around either one end or the other, so I don't see that a 6-foot fence on one side is gonna do that much for you, if you don't mind me saying that?
That's right. That's right, thank you. But I hope that the dog wouldn't come over again. That's my hope, because if it's gonna come over again, it can always find places where, you know, the door is open, I hope it's gonna be under control. But my children are now afraid to see the dog. They don't want to go outside when they see the dog outside. So it's all the dog outside or my children outside?
But if they're out back, they would see the dog anyhow.
Where?
Well, the fence only goes to just behind your house.
But the fence, the dog is usually at the side of the house, that side where the dog is always. It's not on the street usually. It's all day on the side. On the grass, on the side, at that side. The dog isn't loose on the street, it's just loose in their backyard.
Anyone else on the board have anything to ask Ms. Sofa? No? Do you have anything else to add?
Just that I hope you're gonna understand my problem, it's not-
We do.
A dog usually, some people, it's not anything to be scared of. But let's say, I would compare it, let's say if a lion would be on your neighbor's yard, it's for them like a lion. So let's say they was promised it's not even on your property, whatever. Will you feel safe if the lion would be allowed to be alone on the grass and you have no fence and nothing in between, like to block it? I'm coming?
No. You're waiting for an answer?
That's what I'm trying to explain, for them it's like a bear, a lion, it's like big, and they never saw it, and I also never saw it in my community. I would never buy this house if I would see this dog. So that's why I just want to be safe for myself, for my kids, and I hope you can understand my problem, my situation.
We do, no, no, we've heard you.
I really appreciate your time, and thank you so much for your effort to help us, and I hope that if you're gonna help us, we should live in peace and harmony in this community. It's a very nice community, it's beautiful, the grounds are beautiful.
Yes.
Everything's beautiful, I really enjoy the nice views and the nice grass and trees and everything, it's really, and it's very nice, everything, the services, I really appreciate everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the first row who would like to speak to this application? Second row? Third row?
I just have a question, like the whole fencing-
Would you state your name, please?
Lisa Prickto. The whole fencing thing, like, they're allowed to have a 4-foot fence, right?
Correct, 50 percent solid.
So we're just talking about the extra-
Right, well, we're talking about, they're allowed a 4-foot 50 percent solid fence, not a 6-foot solid fence, in the front. In the rear, they can have a 6-foot solid. But not in the front.
Okay.
Or side.
Alright, so, I mean, if we're just talking about blocking the view, then that blocks both sides of the view, so it's not just the person who's putting up the fence, but it's other people who live in the area, right? Their view-
Well, yeah, because they want it to go down to the street, yeah, it would be seen by everyone.
But if we're talking about jumping over it, that's not an issue because it's not going around the whole house?
Well, I don't know about the dog, I don't know what the dog can do.
I mean, I feel like with that kind of reasoning, like being afraid of something, you could just say you're, I mean, there's wildlife everywhere, bears, deer, coyotes. Could be afraid of all of that, so. Alright, I just wanted to clarify the difference between the 4 feet and the 6 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in that row? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, ZBA. My name is Cliff Ador, I live at 12 Pheasant Run. That's directly next to the applicant. And I just want to be clear about a few things, I think it's important to note for the record, okay? That I don't want this to be perceived in any way as anti-Semitic, because I am Jewish. Fischteid yirish, ech ben ayit, okay? Alright. So that being said, um, she is talking about my dog. To start, we've lived there going on eighteen years. We've always had a dog. My previous dog passed away. This is another dog. What she referred to was when my dog was almost four months old as a puppy. He came out of the door and he walked next door. It's the first thing. So it did happen, I wanna acknowledge that. As Mrs. Sofer stated, she did call, but she didn't speak, she screamed. She got my number from my neighbor across the street, called me up and screamed at me, which was threatening. Since I was concerned, I asked her, was anybody injured? First of all, I wanna make sure, no. And I called the police and I put it in the blotter just to make sure that everybody was aware of the situation. 'Cause I like to protect myself. I don't wanna see my dog get taken away for something that didn't happen. 'Cause I didn't want something to be claimed later. So I wanted to be a little preemptive in, in my, in my phone call. You know, the six-foot fence that she's applying for doesn't preclude them from hearing my dog. My dog does bark. The other thing that we have, that we deal with quite often, is that their children will stand on the property line or in their backyard and say, "Doggy, doggy, doggy." And I might've heard Kelav once or twice, which is Hebrew for dog. He's a puppy, he'll just be a year old. So seeing other children and seeing them get excited, you can imagine, a puppy likes to walk over and see what's going on. He's never unleashed. If he is unleashed, he has a, well, I shouldn't say he's never unleashed. If he is unleashed, he does have an electric collar. If he's in the backyard of my house, he's in a pen. I do walk him on the street, though. So, you know, he is visible to the neighbors. And to my understanding, you know, no neighbors object. One of my other neighbors comes over and actually likes to pet the dog, which is a little strange. You have to understand the culture really doesn't have dogs. So I understand that there's some, some apprehension when they see a dog. You know, the, the kids yell to him, when I'm, when I have him on a leash, they cry. When I'm in the backyard on my property playing with him and he is wearing electrified collar, something that I don't have to do, 'cause he's under control, he's a year old, I hear the kids crying. If I don't hear them crying, I hear them say, "Doggy, doggy, doggy," from their deck over. I put up trees seventeen years ago, they're now thirty-foot tall, that surround the property. It was a considerable expense. I have about forty trees on both sides of my property. You know, we, we ourselves put up a fence, right? We wanted privacy and I understand that. Made an application to the ZBA. Nobody objected, including the person across the street. It's, it's a pleasing fence. It's a, it's a white vinyl fence and it's, you know, nice for the community not to have a chain-link fence in a residential community. You know, like the one that we live in. I'm sure you've been up there before. And that's really all we would be asking for. If a fence was to go up, if it's aesthetically pleasing to the community, I don't think anybody would object, certainly not me. I don't think it's a problem with privacy. You know, we also have several windows on our side. We have four windows on the side. And seeing a chain-link fence on the side, that's the side that I sit on most often in my house and that's what I would look at. They have no windows on the side of the house. So it, it wouldn't disrupt their view and it certainly wouldn't do anything to the home value for them. It would do something to the home value for me, in my opinion, if people had a lookout and see a chain-link fence. I, I certainly have nothing against any of my neighbors. We've, we've embraced our community, um, you know? In fact, on several occasions, when the neighbors were new, I tried to say hello and wave hello. I'm not spoken to. My wife has never been spoken to or looked at, you know, which is, I guess, cultural. But that's okay, 'cause we keep to ourselves, you know, anyway. All, all I am asking for as the neighbor in direct view of this is that the ZBA considers, um, in this application, that if it does go in, it's somewhat pleasing to look at, not just for me, but for my neighbors and the community as a whole. I don't wanna, you know, there's been significant change in the community over seventeen years. I'm sure you can understand, there's been a lot of applications to the ZBA. Myself, like most, came here because, you know, we liked wide-open spaces. I didn't wanna fence anything in. I ask that you consider my application and hear from the other neighbors that are here to speak on our behalf as well.
I have a question for you, Mr. Ador. How large is your dog?
He's currently eighty-five pounds. Oh, okay. Would you like to see a...
How big he was when it happened?
To see a picture?
No, no, I just want to know now.
Just, just when it happened, he was almost four months old. And he's a baby. He's, he's under control, you know? He is a large dog. But just, just to note for the board, my nineteen-pound dog was a concern to my, my new neighbors as well. He was a concern when he was seventeen and literally on two legs. So, you know, it's cultural and I get it. My, my dog is well-trained. You know, he's a dog, you know? He does bark, he will continue to bark. And furthermore, I walk him on the street, on a leash, around the community, daily. I have him outside daily. I haven't trained him to use the bathroom inside the house yet. So... It might happen. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a dog. I've, I've had bear in my backyard and incidentally, the other day, and you can check the police blotter, there was a raccoon that came across the street. And he wasn't, he wasn't looking too good, it was in the afternoon. As soon as I saw it, I called the police department and I said, "Listen, considering her children that I see outside, two, four, five, and the other children that roam, you know, and play, I called the police department, I said, 'You need to get somebody up here because this is a rabid raccoon.'" Eighteen years living in Orange County, you become familiar with them. And I, you know, one time I was gonna invite one in for dinner. And I called the police department, they came up and they looked for it. I have concern for my neighbors, as do all of us. Twenty years of public service as a police officer. I care about people, I care about my neighbors. My dog is not gonna hurt anybody. I think that if they gave it an opportunity and came over and said, "Hello, nice to meet you, we're new," I would extend my hand and say, "I'm new also." Shalom bias. All right? Thank you.
Mr. Ador, you said you have a fence and you required a variance. Where is your fence? What height and what's it made out of?
It's made of solid vinyl.
It's on the opposite side?
On the opposite side and there's thirty...
How tall is it?
Six-foot. Say again?
It's not solid.
Oh, it's not solid, I'm sorry, there's lattice on top.
Okay.
So it's five foot with a foot of lattice.
What was your previous dog?
A miniature schnauzer.
So you went from miniature schnauzer to a German shepherd?
Uh, in the police department, I always wanted to be in the K-9 unit. And when the opportunity presented itself, I wanted a shepherd and so did my daughter.
Have you, have you done any kind of introductions with the kids next door?
Uh, I did try.
Because I can tell you, I've got three dogs.
Yeah.
I got a germ, I got a pit bull, I've got a husky and German shepherds.
So, so...
Very territorial.
So it's a great question. Just one second, you can, um, come on. When he was young, my neighbor came across the street and, um, my neighbor Jacob came across the street, 'cause we were, you know, uh, he was asking me questions about power tools and about some other issues. And, you know, I said, "Sure, come over and, you know, I'll help you out." So when he walked over, uh, he came over to my garages and my dog is in the house and just walked over as a small puppy. And when he came close to him, he was freaked out, right? And his kids were with him. So I said, "You know, bring, bring your kids over, let me introduce you to him." He was a small puppy at the time, he was probably thirty-some odd pounds. When the father reacted to the dog bumping into his leg at thirty pounds, the kid ran across the street all the way into his house. Being a puppy, what does the puppy do? Puppy chases the person who runs. I yelled, "Stop, stop running." He kept running. He ran faster than Carl Lewis. And, and the dog chased him, you know, but didn't do anything, tail was going the whole time. So I, I understand when you come from a culture that doesn't have dogs, I, I hear that all the time. "By us, we don't have dogs, by us, we don't have dogs." I get it. I'm more than willing to, you know, accommodate them and say, "Here, just come meet the dog." My other new neighbors love the dog. In fact, my neighbor next door has no problem, it's never been a problem. And it hasn't really been a problem this time. It's just the difference of cultures, you know? If a hand was extended, it would probably do a lot more good than his own, you know, variance for a fence.
Good question?
Sure, Gary.
What year, what year, if you recall, was the variance granted for your fence?
Twenty sixteen.
Uh, sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. It was like November of twenty sixteen. How big are the prongs on that electronic fence collar?
Big. He stops in his tracks. Yeah, just, just wearing it is enough from dissuading him from moving away from me. 'Cause he, you know, fears the shock. And it's on him whenever he's outside.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this application?
Hello, my name is David Lopez, I live at nine Pheasant Run. I'll take this opportunity to publicly welcome the Sofer family to my, uh, beautiful and diverse neighborhood. The only issue I might have, and, and I can, I, I would expect this is a longstanding law of, uh, the height of the fence, is, uh, I'm really not interested in looking at a chain-link fence. I left the Bronx so I don't have to look at chain-link fences. I left the Bronx so I don't have to look at roll-down gates at storefronts. All right? This is a beautiful landscape, it's a beautiful area. I believe I live in one of the most beautiful places in the Hudson Valley. All right? I can understand that they might feel this might be a security issue, which is fine. I just don't wanna look at a chain-link fence. My understanding is, uh, we're supposed, I'm, there's a myriad, a myriad of other options than a six-foot chain-link fence. Uh, something solid. And my only concern after hearing what, what's been said, are we looking at this fence to get down towards the, the curb line? 'Cause I think that's, that's really gonna look horrendous. My neighbor Cliff, his, uh, fence starts at the front edge of his house. I'd be more than happy with the, you know, that type of situation where it'd be like an L shape towards the back. But, uh, this thing coming out to the street would really be an eyesore. I mean, it really, I mean, and once again, uh, I really wanna stay away from the chain-link fence. I don't want this to look like the Bedford Correctional Facility. And I don't, I don't say that laughingly. Like I said, I, I've lived in the Bronx my whole life. Reminds me of the public schools down there, reminds me of a lot of things. And I, and, uh, like I said, I have no problem with a fence, uh, as long as it's aesthetically pleasing. And like I said, there's a myriad of options. I, I really would like to see the fact that, uh, a chain-link fence, six-foot high, is not one of those options.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application?
Hello, everyone, my name's Jesus Gomez. I live at twenty-two Pheasant Run. My only issue is, uh, having a fence on one side to prevent a dog. That, a fence that's supposed to go to the street first of all, it's gonna look horrendous. Chain, chain-link on top of it, why? We moved, they moved into this neighborhood, they said, 'cause they want to move away from that busy life that they had in Cajun and down in Williamsburg or wherever it was. So now they wanna come, but now they wanna change some stuff. And that's fine. If they're concerned about a dog, why only put it on one side of fence? Makes absolutely no sense. When the dog can just go around that fence in the front or in the back. So it's really providing absolutely no kind of security. And it makes absolutely no sense. There's no common sense to having a fence on one side and on top of it, a, a six-foot one. You'll have, you're already proved for four, as it says in the bylaws, whatever it is there. So if that's not enough, then how high it's gonna be? And you're gonna surround your whole house? Are we gonna go into locking up everybody's homes? Now, no one's gonna be a neighbor anymore? It makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. Any common person with common sense would say, uh, "Where is that gonna provide any kind of security from a dog?" 'Cause this is the issue, the dog. Besides it looking horrendous, but the concern is now the safety of the thing, of the dog and the kids and having out there. Well, if you have a two, four, five and a bunch of kids outside, there should be parents with them at all times. Not the other ten, nine-year-old, six-year-old taking care of the other children. There's parents, they can control a dog like that, especially if they met, they met the neighbor's dog and introduced like they suggested, which is what everyone should do as neighbors. But that is not the case in this thing. So we're just talking about a fence for six feet across the whole side on one side, which is gonna provide absolutely no security to, to them whatsoever. 'Cause that dog is gonna just go whoop right around. And if he wants to do something, it's gonna go right around the front or the back, so it's not gonna protect you from anything. So what was the point? It makes no sense whatsoever. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other comments on this application? Oh, you had a question?
Hi, my name is Leigh Ann Ador. I'm Cliff's wife, I live next door. Just to add one thing, I know, um, they were concerned about seeing the dog and hearing the dog. And she says that if the kids just even see the dog, they're concerned. Their deck is, um, their house is next door to us and their house is higher than our house and their deck is higher than my backyard. So even if they put a six-foot fence in, they can still see into my backyard and still see us in our backyard. It goes, their deck is here, then it's my driveway and you can see right into the backyard. So she will still be able to see. When they're sitting on the deck, they put a screen, they'll still be able to see the dog, a six-foot. And I have no problem with them putting a fence up. Again, none of us wanna look at a chain-link fence. All the other fences in the neighborhood that might be metal are covered in shrubs or trees or wooded areas. That's what I think it is here. Nobody wants to just look at a chain-link fence. Put a vinyl fence up like we did. But half a fence, I don't know what that's gonna do, you're still gonna see and hear the dog. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for this application? Sir, did you wanna speak? Yes.
Regarding the fence, um, everybody talked about...
Would you please state your name for the record?
Oh, my name's David Sofer. Um, I'm the owner of fourteen Pheasant Run. And I heard the concerns about the neighbors, about the chain-link fence. It's not a problem that we can put a vinyl fence, is that, if that the issue? And if, um, regards that they say that it's not safety because in front, in front there is not a fence, we can also do in front, but, um, we just first want to see if it'll be enough obscure, obscure like that. So this is, this is a, a, a expense that we not expected. So it's, will cost us a lot of money. And if we need to make a fence in the front, we can do it too.
All righty, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone from the board? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you want me to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing is closed, we'll talk about it after the meeting. You're welcome to stay or you can call the building department tomorrow to see what the decision is. All righty, thank you.
All right, who's next? I'll be sleeping pretty quick.
We have a public hearing for Jeremiahus for an area variance to prevent the installation of a six-foot-high solid stockade fence in a front and side yard, whereas pursuant to section one forty-six five A B and one forty-six seven A, the maximum height permitted in a front and side yard is four feet high at fifty percent solid. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at forty-two Country Hollow in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two forty-seven, block five, lot eighteen. Um, I have a letter that was entered into the record from a resident on the, um, I guess on Country Hollow. Do I, do I read that now? Or do I get that later? All right. "The purpose of this letter is to voice my opposition to the erection of a six-foot stockade fence at forty-two Country Hollow, Highland Mills. I believe the building codes that currently exist provide for the safety of our citizens as well as the aesthetic qualities we all wish to maintain in our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration in this matter." Patricia Coogan, thirty-eight, Country Hollow. I have a question, Mr. Jeremiahus. Are you Mr. Jeremiahus?
Yes, I'm, I'm Michael Jeremiahus. I'm the father of Abraham Jeremiahus, who owns the house and he had an emergency. He couldn't attend, so I'm familiar with the case and I, I'm, I'm, I'm here on behalf of my son.
Okay, my question is, um, that, does, does your son live at that location?
Correct, yes.
Because of the, um, notices that went out, there's an Abraham Jeremiahus in Monroe. Is that the same?
That's another Abraham.
Another Abraham, okay. Common name?
Yes.
Alright, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, why the, why the partial fence?
Okay.
Yeah, describe to us the problem that's going on here.
Somebody said about the culture, and I must admit that, that, that's a fact, because I'm petrified from a, from a dog myself. If I see a dog the, one block down, even if it's so small as a puppy, I'm going to run away. I'm a real estate, I'm a developer, and I once walked into my lawyer's office and he had a dog, I jumped to the sky. But having said that, we still have a right to live in the community, and we still have a right, we paying taxes. And as a normal citizen, we have our rights. This situation, I've been noticed myself. I'm afraid to go to my son's house. The neighbor has a very large dog, and he has videos, but he couldn't, he couldn't be here, he couldn't bring it, where the dogs have been chasing, and the entire family, he had a party once, the entire family was running, the whole, he has a big backyard. It's, it looks like, it looked like a world war, like chaos. I mean, the dog was, as many times we talked to the neighbor, please hold your, hold the chain of your dog. It's like talking to the wall. And I begged him to go to the police, to make a police report, and he didn't want to fight with the neighbors, trying to get along with the neighbors. Didn't want to make a whole federal case. He talked to them once, twice again, and just didn't help. My son's, the way is, is, the neighbor's backyard is my son's side yard, which is, what's his name?
Sequoia.
Sequoia. So really, for the, it's allowed under the zoning, it's allowed a six-foot fence for the backyard. But it's because my son, it's considered a side yard, he only has the right for a four-foot. But I asked him a question, I mean, what would help you one side? And I heard all these questions. And he said, because the dog is always in the backyard. So basically, once it's blocked off, because that's the main place for the dog, he feels it's worth a try to be, to be protected. And he is willing to put up a, another chaining fence, a nice vinyl fence to accommodate the neighbor's concerns. And literally, this is the same problem. It's not that they have to look out and be afraid of the dog. They, they have this, afraid to go out to the bus, afraid to go outside the backyard, summer, winter. It's just, it's just a nightmare. And I, I, me as a grandfather, I have five grandchildren there. I'm afraid to go visit them, so.
But you're also putting a, a fence over a, an easement.
Right, we have a letter that's, right, we have a letter on that, yes.
Okay.
They're allowed to do that, however, if there's a problem, if, if we allow the fence and there's a problem, the homeowner would be responsible for removing and replacing the fence.
But only putting an 83-foot fence down a little ways is-
It's not a little ways, it's the-
It's not going to solve nothing.
It's the entire side yard up to where he feels where the, the main living place of the dog is.
But the dog could come around back, around the fence.
Well, he's willing to try it. He feels, he's living there for two years, and he feels that's the main problem. And he tried and tried and talked to neighbors. I'll let my attorney take over.
Your attorney?
Me.
Jay Miro, Blue Sea Shapiro, Richard Barone, Mr. Jeremiahus has been a client of mine for a long time. And despite that, I just learned about this a few minutes ago. So if there is an issue regarding an easement, I'm certainly willing to look into it and see whether or not he's precluded in any manner, if that's something-
No, the, the letter we have from the Village of Woodbury Water, Waste Water Department, it says, it's a 20-foot sewer easement. If at any time a problem should arise with the sewer main, and if it becomes necessary to take down the fence, it will be the owner's sole responsibility to replace the fence.
So it's not, it's not a private easement, it's the, it's the village?
Yeah, must be, because, yeah, it says what Village of Woodbury.
That can be a condition, and Mike can certainly specify that as a condition of the variance.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be an issue.
Okay.
Is there anything, did, you've spoken to your neighbor? Does your, I mean, has your son spoken to his neighbor?
He's spoken many times and many promises. He's going out for two years, and I begged him to go to the police. And again, I'm not living there. He wants to, he doesn't want to have fights with his neighbor. He, he didn't want to go. He's a very soft-spoken guy, my son, and he didn't want to get into a fight with his neighbor. So he said, I'm not going to go to the police. I'd rather spend the money, put up a fence, and not have to fight with neighbors.
So it's, so this has happened numerous times?
Numerous times. He has videos on it. I mean, it's just unbelievable, just to look at it from our perspective.
Has he ever made a report to the animal control officer about this, sir?
I believe he did call, and I'm, oh, she begged, oh, that's my wife's.
I'm Sarah Jeremiahus. Okay, she begged him not to, because she said, if he will, they'll take the dog away. Because she knows the dog, she knew the dog kept on running into his yard.
Well, as you just heard from the, the previous applicant's discussion there, a dog isn't supposed to roam free, and there are things that you can do as far as the electric fences, where the dog couldn't come over past the fence, no matter how big.
She asked, my son asked her to put electric fence, and she said, no, it's going to hurt the dog.
Well, the law is, it's supposed to be either hooked up or behind the fence. It's their responsibility, you know?
Right, but she will not do that, because she said it's going to shock the dog, and she just doesn't want to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one thing, I, I know you brought up the issue as to whether the extent of the fencing is really going to keep the dog out or really. I think both certainly, it sounds like Mr. Jeremiahus that you're, this board, whenever you consider granting an area variance, you always want to grant the least, least, the smallest variance you could do that will serve the purpose. And if an applicant comes in and says, you know, we think the side yard is just going, is going to work, it certainly is worth a try. I'm not sure that really should be something that should be held against the applicant. Coming, you know, the only, I, I'm assuming that you may consider that the only real way to, for this to be effective would be to fence the entire perimeter. Not sure anybody really wants that, especially if doing one line might work. So, just want to make that point.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this application? Yes, sir?
Two, two minutes.
I'll take one minute. Again, Cliff Adar from 12 Pheasant Run. This is not my dog. The Coogans that they're referring to have been there for 18 years, and they've always had a dog also. And again, cultural, as you agreed with, you know, we're trying to assimilate. I've assimilated, I have Arabs around my entire property. And I look at 18-foot silver poles, okay? And I've assimilated. I assimilate with nine buses a day. I assimilate with 50 kids who are unsupervised. I assimilate. They wave at me, I wave at them. Dogs exist in the world. I had a bear in my backyard. I don't know what you're going to do when you see a bear. If you're jumping when you see a dog, you'll do what I did, you'll climb a tree. Alright? You know, this is the reality of, of integration and assimilation with, with a new community. We're all experiencing this. Maybe you, you and your family and everybody else can take a moment and try to assimilate also. Shalom bias, right? Peace with everybody? Okay, that's all we ask for. Peace. That's what we're asking for. Nothing more, just peace.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, one more thing.
I just want to make one more point. I, I think that my son has been very accommodated. He didn't even try to ask for chaining fence. He's sensitive to the neighbors. And as far as I heard, the biggest complaint is being, seeing garage doors from the Bronx and chaining fences. So right from the get-go, he's asking for a nice vinyl fence, or if you want a green, you can put, covered with green. Chaining fence covered with green is just like green, whatever, whatever the people feel like, he's happy to accommodate. And all he wants is to live in peace and live a peaceful family.
Thank you.
Felicita Farrar is my name. I'm, live in the community. I teach in the community. My suggestion would be, get these kids around some dogs. There are plenty of places that you can start letting these kids see dogs. I lived here from this, I moved from the city. I was scared of groundhogs. I didn't ask to build fences. I thought it was a rab, rabbit at first. I'm like, oh, look, there's a wild rabbit. So we have wildlife here. A, a side fence is just going to look hideous. It's not going to block anything. The attorney said, oh, what does it matter? At least they're trying to do the least restricted. I'm sorry, it's about aesthetics, it's about a community, it's about teaching kids to love your neighbors, talk to your neighbors, not block yourselves in, and not put a fence that's not going to block anything. I mean, there's bears and wildlife here. This is ridiculous that we're even having a conversation about a half a fence trying to block a dog. I mean, it's not going to happen. Dogs are dogs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alright. Anyone else needs to speak on this? Okay.
Sorry.
No, we shouldn't be here today.
New point. Lisa Prickto, I live on Jefferson Street. I don't come to the zoning meetings all the time, so I don't know how many times this fence thing came up. But I see that there's two in one night, and I just feel like, I mean, you're allowed to have a fence. You can have the four-foot fence. We're just talking about, about a variance.
Right.
And there should be some, like legit, well, really serious reason, I think, because of the aesthetics. And I do feel like if we start approving them, it sets a precedent. And then each successive person says, will you let them have a, a variance? Why can't I? And, you know, I just worry about like the domino effect of starting to grant variances.
Thank you. Last call. Anyone else?
I make a motion, close the public hearing?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we'll be discussing it after the meeting. You're welcome to stay, or call the Building Department tomorrow with what our decision is.
Who's next?
Alright.
Better not be here, Steve. Better not be here today. Why is Karen putting so many on the agenda?
Yeah, why did Karen do that?
Why did Karen do that? Don't go past E from now on.
Oh, my gosh.
Who we doing next? Center Valley Property. Five minutes.
We're taking a minute, couple of minute break here. Anyone needs to use the restroom, like the board members?
Well, I can't stop them if they have something to say. Well, there's been it's a valid one.
I said the same thing myself getting out of my car tonight.
All the deer for the big deer.
Kevin will, Kevin will come back, I'm sure.
The attorney for Bakersfield wanted to know, are you going to go till you die? Or are you going to go to the hospital and stop, continue until you're dead? you going to throw the lot somewhere, stop, continue until another day?
All right, we have a new public hearing. This is, this is for Central Valley Property. Notice is hereby given that the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Woodbury Town Hall, 511 Route 32. What am I doing? I'm reading the wrong thing, sorry. It's the right thing, just the wrong words. Public hearing for an area variance to permit a proposed mixed-use building on a property having a lot area of 68,346 square feet, whereas pursuant to Section 310-6F and 310-7 Bulk Regulations, the combination of all proposed uses will require a lot area of 78,000 square feet. Said property is located in the HB Zoning District at 252 to 260 State Route 32 in Central Valley, is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 230 Block 7 Lots 17, 18, and 19. Is the applicant, the applicant is present. Please state your name for the record, even though we heard you before.
Steve Esposito, Esposito Associates.
All righty. So you're seeking relief from the lot area?
We are seeking relief from lot area.
Okay.
It's a 12% relief, 12% variance.
And what's that for?
It is for, well, let me just explain to you a little bit.
For parking spots, or?
No.
No, this is for the building itself.
The, the, development coverage is 75% of the lot, we're at 65% of the lot. It's not about building size, it's not about parking lot size, it's about uses. And this particular project is, it's been before the board previously, it's a mixed-use building, consistent with both the master plan and the purpose of the Hamlet Zoning District. The Hamlet Zoning District, you know, purpose is to promote mixed-use development, both non-residential and residential. The, your planner, actually, this was submitted to the planning board initially, and I'd just like to read, quote, read his comment, "This proposal is consistent with, consistent with, and indeed helps implement the village comprehensive plan. It proposes mixed-use residential and non-use, non-residential uses and a pedestrian family plan with parking in the back." What we're proposing is, there's the existing TD building, bank building, here, it's about 2,400 square feet, currently under renovation. The building that's being proposed, located on Route 32 and Estrada Drive, is 17,000 square feet in total, 86,000, 8,600 square feet on the first floor is proposed for mixed commercial, second floor is proposed for residential. The residential consists of four two-bedroom units and one, four one-bedroom units, again, providing a variety of housing type in the Hamlet Zone, consistent with both the comp plan and, and the district. Why we're here is that we have to have the, if the, we can have, we're permitted a number of principal uses on the site, but we have to meet the minimum requirement, minimum lot requirements for each of those uses. The apartments require 84, 48,000 square feet, and the, what we're proposing is three commercial uses. We don't know what it's going to be, we don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, I think the, the Hamlet Zone has a lot of potential good uses, so what we're doing is we're proposing restaurant, office, and retail. In order to do that, that's 30,000 square feet, the total lot area would have to be 78,000 square feet. It may be an entire, it may be entirely an office building, it could be entirely a retail building, it may just be two uses. We wouldn't need a variance, but what we're trying to do is, one, provide a variety of, you know, potential uses in the marketplace, consistent with the comp plan and the district itself. We're looking.
If the whole thing was office space, you wouldn't need a variance.
No.
Nope. We could, so.
To make it mixed use, you do need a variance.
We could have, we can have two commercial uses in the eight apartments. That is 6,800, 68,000 square feet, our lot is 68,340 square feet. We don't need a variance. But what we're saying is to make this marketable, and hopefully make it successful, having that variety of uses, potentially, potential, would hopefully aid to the success of this, and it's, you know, a successful project is good both for my client and the village. So, and, so that's why we're here.
And changing the uses does not change the need of parking?
No. Well, what we've done for this particular, and again, the reason why we've, we've identified square, we've assigned square footages for restaurant, square footages for retail, and square footages for office. We then, that calculated the, calculated the parking required for that, and then also they calculated the required parking for the eight residential units. So that's, we, and, you know, so we, we kind of draw that line in the sand, so we can do trip, we did a traffic study, we did trip generation, parking analysis, you know, sewer water, you know, so those are, so, but we have to start with something, and that's what we started with. And we picked, we chose to pick three non-residential uses to allow for flexibility in, in, you know, leasing the space.
Were you a little short on the parking?
We are a little short on the parking, correct.
And that you're going to go to a 25% waiver on that?
No, we're going to, I believe, I forget the exact number, but we had prepared a, we had done a traffic, traffic, or parking analysis, which was reviewed by the village's parking, traffic consultant. He agreed with our, our analysis, and we meet, we, our, interestingly, our peak day, I think, is like December 14th at 2:00 in the afternoon, weekday, weekend, and we meet, or exceed the required parking during that peak day, and then I think the weekday peak is somewhere in that same week. But normally, we have more than enough parking here.
Any comments from the board on the square footage and usage, or? No?
No, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the first row who'd like to speak to this application? Second row?
I'm going to read from here, because I want to make sure I've gone to all these meetings, so I want to make sure all my points that I can finally speak are addressed, because I've gone to your meetings and it was not public, so bear with me.
Could you say your first name?
Sure, my name is Felicita Ferrara. I'm currently own property behind the CV Properties that they're talking about. Like I said, I've been to the zoning meetings and the planning board meetings. I've lived in this community for 10 years, I have two small children, and we live behind the private road. I have following concerns regarding this property. The site plan shows that there's a foot, six-foot white fence that will now be my new view from my front door when I open my door. When I have gone to the plan meeting, some of the board members have raised that concern, and the property manager said, well, I'm doing what is supposed to be done, or how high it's supposed to be. We also talked about the landscaping all around that is beautiful for the view of everyone else, but again, from my view, all I'm going to have is a six-foot white fence with no shrubs that are according to this plan on my site, nothing down below to now not see just this big giant six-foot fence.
Could I interrupt you for just a moment?
Mm-hmm.
What we're deciding tonight is the square footage and the lot coverage?
Right, you're asking for a variance for that.
Right.
And if you don't do the variance, that, then this would not be my view.
Yeah, that's going to happen, it'll happen anyhow.
Because this is a permitted use, this, this application is a permitted use, they're just looking for a variance for the lot coverage. In other words, the fence, the shrubbery, and whatever, that's all planning board, or it's not, it's not something we can, we have any control over?
So I don't understand. I'm going to meeting after meeting, I don't understand when I get to speak about my concerns. I, I don't, I don't understand. I keep going to all your meetings, and each time, I can't speak about my concerns, so I don't know when I'm supposed to speak. I mean, obviously, then this thing is going up, and no one compares about the community or their concerns.
Can I make a suggestion to you? That probably your best, you have multiple venues, but the most impactful venue would be the planning board public hearing, and they will listen to everything you have to say.
You can certainly address those concerns tonight, but I think what the board is trying to point out to you is, the only thing they need a variance for is the increase in the square footage of the new building. A building could be permitted there and will likely be built no matter what. And then issues about, how does the landscaping work, where is the traffic circulation, what kind of fence, what kind of soundproofing, light protection, those are all issues that the planning board will take up.
Okay. So the variance that they're asking for is exactly, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Right now, they could build a building of 68,000, with a lot size of 68,000, they could have a building, I don't know, Steve, you could tell us the size.
Same size, it's what's there.
The size?
The size, right.
That's true, the size doesn't change. It's the, it's the addition of the mixed-use component, meaning having the residential and commercial at the same, same time. That increases the, the lot size need, and they don't need it, so there's a, a shortfall of 9,000 or so square feet.
For commercial mix.
That requires a variance for them to have the mixed use of a marketable nature.
And versus not having a mixed use, then it would just be all office space?
I think, Stevie, I also said you could actually have a mixed use, but not, not a four-unit mixed use.
Right, each use requires 10,000 square feet, each apartment requires 6,000 square feet, so if you total up the three uses plus this, was it six apartments, eight apartments, it's over the limit. So they're looking for a variance for that.
Well, then, all I asked you to do is say, then, if you're looking for a variance, to really think about, is this variance needed? Because as I walk around this community, I can see tons of empty buildings, and I see lots of storefronts that are not occupied, I don't understand why we need more stores in, in this area, I just don't see it. I can walk around and I can point out all the empty stores. So why do we need a variance to make more stores? I don't understand how it's going to help our community, or any of the residents that already live here.
But didn't, didn't you ask for a fence? When, did you come here before?
I come to all your, all the meetings that have to do with this, this property.
And I thought you had come and you were, like, wanted a fence.
It was very early on.
Very early on, they were mentioning about a six-foot fence.
You were concerned about the drop.
I don't want a fence, I want something more sturdier than a fence. My children play on that road, someone can easily go through that fence. Right now, there is metal, like a highway divider, and what they're proposed to do is make a six-foot fence, which easily, if I'm in a car and I put my foot on the gas, I can go through that fence and down to my property and hit where my kids are playing.
Well, you need to take that to the planning board. I'm sorry, but that's.
If I could give you an analogy, when the, when the Mercedes dealership was before the planning board, there were residents in Brookside, or, over, over in Harriman, that had very, virtually the same concerns that you did, regarding line of sight, fencing, encroachment, same words that you're using. And clearly, the planning board worked on their behalf, if you will, to make sure that the applicant included appropriate pertinences to mitigate the problems that they were discussing. So that, that is clearly the venue that you should be looking at, the public hearing of the planning board.
Okay. Again, when you make your decision, just think about all those empty stores on 32.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application? Any, yes, sir?
My name is Keith Reeves, I live at Ada Estrada Road. I've been here 21 years. I'm like right across the street from this, where my driveway is, is virtually almost where that entrance and exit is. And, you know, I got to tell you, over the last 21 years, it's, it's gotten so much harder to get in and out of my driveway. I actually back into my driveway when I get home, even though I almost get killed doing it, because I'm like the second house in from the, the road, and people turn that, you know, road sometimes really quick, and I'm back into my driveway. But I back into my driveway because sometimes I have trouble getting out of my driveway because of the backup at Route 32. So, you know, I came tonight really just to, you know, get informed on what's going there and so forth. But when I look at it, my concern is, you know, having the exit, and those, that exit right there, I think that's problematic. And again, I know, to your point, and I wanted to get that information from you, is to coming to the, going to the planning board to have input on that, for my views and so forth, because of lights and things. But again, my, when you're talking about the variance, it's kind of, to the woman's point earlier, you know, we see so many, do, do we need to make the variance? Because it's already congested, and we, you know, see a lot of storefronts, I mean, that side strip and all there, that, that's like, oh my God, in the 21 years I've been here, I think I've only seen it half-full all that time. So, to me, it's just a matter of, do we need any more congestion that there's going to be? I mean, it's, it's a mixed-use property, I get it. You know, when I bought there, I always dreamed that one day that would be made into a park. No, that's a dream, but it is a mixed-use property that's abutting residential. So, you know, we have to take that into, into consideration when we're looking at variances. Our neighbor couldn't be here, but they are across the street from me, and they're abut the property right up against it, I'm across the street from it. But again, I just think when we are looking at making exceptions and variance, it really comes down to, is it beneficial to the, to the community, is it needed in the community? And as being someone who that's like ground zero for, that congestion at the light there, I, I just, to add any more congestion that will be there with any mixed use, I just would, would ask you to take that into consideration.
But, you know, and I, I understand what you're saying, but they can build the, the building regardless.
Oh, absolutely, and I said, I knew that was always going to be.
So, the Estrada Road thing isn't going to change?
No, but again, if you make a variance to allow more congestion to it, it's, is it, I'm just asking you to take it under advisement.
But the amount of space is still going to be used, regardless whether it's office, retail. I mean, so, they're just asking for a third use. That's all they're really asking us for tonight. Instead of the two uses they're allowed, they're asking for a, a third use.
All the uses are allowed, they're asking to have three uses, or, well.
Right, I just, I was just trying to explain that. I understand Estrada Road, I understand, because I live on Estrada Road too, so, I go out that way every day.
Yeah. You cut me off, no.
It was you.
I'm too early for you.
All right, like I said, I just, I wanted to speak my concerns. Where would I?
Planning board.
Where would I, how would I watch that, for that?
For the planning board?
YouTube or Channel 22?
Channel 22.
Or YouTube.
Thank you very much.
It's not on 22?
It's not on 22.
It's not on 22?
Just on YouTube.
Just on YouTube?
Not YouTube, YouTube.
Oh.
You had the answer before you had the question.
Okay.
Connect the mechanism.
All right. Anyone else need to speak to this application? Like to speak to this application?
I make a motion, close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed.
Can we review these on another night?
I don't think so. He's got me going.
I know. How many we got left?
Two.
Two?
We got four left.
No, we got two left. We'll have them done by 9:30.
You never know, you never know, you never know.
You're doing two?
Okay, next public hearing is for Woodview Heights slash 39 MLLC, public hearing.
How you doing?
Public hearing for an area variance for its proposed 13-lot subdivision from the definition of lot area in Section 310-2 1C that requires certain steep slopes and wetland deductions in computing lot area, and that 80% of the slopes on each lot have slopes of 15% or less. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at the corner of Hill Avenue and Van Buren Court in Highland Mills, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 204 Block 1 Lot 34.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure, I don't know if I'll be able to answer it.
I was under the impression, when this first, when we first entertained this application some months ago, that we requested that Dennis Lindsay be here to address this, and I noticed that there's a document here from Dennis's company, but what happened to that?
He's, is he there?
Dennis is, is available, and he, we have his cell number, we can put him on the phone.
I thought in view of the changes to the application and his memo that that might be sufficient, but I didn't want to incur the cost of having him here all evening. If the focus remains and it needs to be adjourned, perhaps we can add this as a first item to an agenda. But he is available by phone if we need to speak to him.
The applicant offered to pay for that at that meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, that's true. I remember that.
I know, but...
But only for an hour.
But is he really going to...
He's on the clock.
Is it really going to have any effect by having Dennis here? I mean, we have a decision to make.
We're hoping not.
Are we going to allow the slopes or not? That's what it comes down to.
All right, so you had a previous appearance here, and it was a fifteen... At that time, it was a fifteen-lot subdivision. So, you've amended the site plan. You now have thirteen... Oh, fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirteen.
No, no, no.
You're down to thirteen now.
You're down to thirteen now. Yeah, down to thirteen. The planning board is issued the negative declaration on the SECRA. So, basically, now the outer ring of homes are in compliance, correct? And the inner ring, you gave us a chart with some... I think one lot has only wetlands or slope, and the others are both. And they're much more minimal than they were previously. So, now you're looking for the variance for those lots so that you can begin...
Right. All right, Jay Myrow, Blue Steed Shapiro, Richard Barone. I'm the attorney for the applicant. I'm here with John Locke from AFR Engineering. He's our engineer. Thank you for having us. We were here in March. At that time, we had a proposed fourteen-lot subdivision, and based on the configuration and in order to accommodate stormwater management, we essentially required a variance from the lot area calculation. It's not necessarily a slope variance. It's a lot area variance for basically all the lots on, in the subdivision. If I could walk up to the map here. What is now Lot seven, which is in this corner, was two lots. And this is where the majority of the wetlands are. And they...
Which of these two maps are you looking at?
April, is it April eighteen? Is there an April eighteen map?
What's the subdivision plan?
Subdivision, subdivision plan. Subdivision plan. There were some significant constraints with the wetlands up in this corner. I spoke to the client. I said, listen, as a practical matter, it's going to make your life easier in terms of locating the house if we combine these two lots. And by doing so, we'll free up some space that we can then allocate on the outside to all of the other lots. And in doing so, we were basically able to bring all of the outside lots into conformity, which I think is pretty significant. The inside of the loop, we don't have open... We don't have free space. And because of the location of the wetlands and slopes, we're basically constrained to where this road location is going to be. We really can't vary it anything significantly. I will point out that even though the restrictions we're dealing with tonight are on a per-lot basis, if you consider the site as a whole, when we freed this up, we actually came up on the outside with a thirty thousand-square-foot surplus. And in the center, we have a twenty-three square thousand... I'm sorry, thirty thousand-square-foot surplus. In the inside, we have a twenty-three thousand-square-foot deficit. On the net, we're actually providing seven thousand more square foot. That doesn't necessarily address each lot, but as a totality of the circumstances, that's one of the facts. So...
Are you including the one that's designated for the MS four?
Yeah, the one for the MS four is actually part of Lot three?
Yes, basically, it's the...
This is not a long one.
The quantities are proposed to be in easement. It will be a part of a lot.
But you're including that in the overall...
Yes, we're allowed to do that. Yes, we're allowed to do that. So, okay, so the end result here is we're... We conform on the outside. We don't conform on the inside tech to the technical requirements of computing the lot area. However, I will point out that every single lot, all thirteen of these lots exceed the minimum lot area required for the zone, which is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So...
Which lots by number need...
That's correct. All right, so basically, so we are proposing a thirteen-lot subdivision. Each lot is greater than forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. The variances on the one table I gave you, which was my doing, shows the percentage of variances required, and they range from basically a four percent deviation from the requirement to an eighteen percent deviation from the requirement. I sent over an addendum basically outlining what I believe is the criteria for granting the variance. The main criteria always in granting an area variance is for you to determine whether or not the granting of the variance will result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or will be a detriment to surrounding properties. So, in that regard, I'd like to point out a number of facts here regarding this. Number one, the property is zoned residential. It's R-one-A. So, the type of development we're putting in is completely compatible with the neighborhood. The entire neighborhood and surrounding area is residential. A lot of the development in the area is built on cul-de-sacs. We have a loop road, which is a benefit. I submitted a number of tax maps for you to look at with... And I hand-wrote in the square footages for the lots that are in the prevailing development of the area. There's a lot of lots in the surrounding area. There's a lot of development, and the overwhelming majority of the lots in the surrounding area and neighborhoods basically range from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square feet. We're proposing lots that are, on the average, more than double what is predominant in the neighborhood surrounding the areas.
But that goes with the older zoning, right, Jay?
That's correct. But there is case law, and the courts have determined that if you have a prevailing... If you have a prevailing pattern of development in an area, and the area is subsequently upzoned, it's presumed that with the greater area for your building lots, it's presumed that you're not going to have an impact on the character of the neighborhood. There is a presumption to that effect. Pardon? Yes, that's correct. That's correct. If you were allowed to build fifteen thousand-square-foot lots forever, and then the property's upzoned to one acre, and you come in, and it's presumed that the one acre is going to be compatible with the neighborhood. So, even where you need a variance, and you're still exceeding what is predominant in the neighborhood, the presumption still applies. So, if it's... If you need forty thousand, you could only get practically thirty thousand. You need a ten-foot variance, and you're still double the size of everything in the neighborhood. There is a presumption that the courts have held that that... There's a presumption that you're not affecting the character of the neighborhood, where you're building lots that are... On lots that are double the size of the predominant pattern in the neighborhood, so...
I can just throw the question on.
Sure.
Just to clarify something that's sort of related matter. When you were before the planning board, they...
They said that... When you were before this planning board, they said that you were held to the newer zoning with the slopes and so forth. So, it seems like what they said was that you're held to the newer zoning, but what you're saying is, as long as it agrees with what's around it, it's okay. Am I being too simplistic? No, we're held to the new zoning. That's why we're here. I'm only talking to... I'm talking to what the criteria is for you in consideration of granting a variance, an area variance.
On the character of the neighborhood, the first factor, I think logic says that they are consistent with the character of the neighborhood because the surrounding neighborhood has smaller lots. Now, that doesn't really make them consistent, but it's not like they're building very small lots in an area that has very large lots. They're, in fact, building lots that will be bigger than the lots in the area. So, for the character of the neighborhood factor, the fact that they may not comply with the code doesn't change the fact that they're bigger.
With the character of the neighborhood? Okay.
Just on that factor.
All right. That's the first question, right, or prong?
Go ahead, Jay.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Yeah, it doesn't change the fact that we need a variance. The question is whether, you know, the fact that you're building on a larger lot, on the average, whether you're going to have an undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood, and you can't. Especially in this context. If you look at the vicinity map, and you look at the tax maps, and you see the amount of development that surrounds this area, you know, with, you know, with these... The extent of the development on cul-de-sac roads, where the average is literally fifteen to twenty thousand square foot, you know, we're well in excess of that. So, and we're building exactly what... Exactly what the people who live in these neighborhoods are presently living in. We're building a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, but you know what's still sticking in my throat is that... Is that you needed this for financial. You need these lots. You can't do the project without these lots because of financial. That's what was brought up at the last meeting.
It was brought up at the last meeting, but I was...
And I get, like, I'm a little like...
The point... Maybe I didn't artfully make the point. The point is, is that we're constrained in terms of how we can deal with the finances of this project. I'm not saying that it was, that we weren't big...
So, you want to give a variance because you guys can't afford to build it?
No, I'm not saying that. I wasn't saying that. I was simply saying that typically, when if you lose... When you have to evaluate a project, and if you have to go from what you hope is twenty lots to maybe ten lots, the way you compensate for that is that you will compensate that by modifying your infrastructure. You maybe build on a cul-de-sac. You maybe build on a shorter road. You maybe don't have to do a loop road. Whatever it is, we don't have that luxury. I'm not here pleading poverty. I'm not using that as an excuse. I'm simply, was simply pointing out that we have a constraint here that we have to deal with, whether it's ten lots, five lots, fifteen lots. We have the same infrastructure cost. We don't have the ability to modify that. And part of that was based on, I believe, a very strong desire on the part of the planning board that we have this as a loop road. No cul-de-sac. They wanted a loop road going through. Okay, we have to accommodate that. But we have... Listen, if I was here pleading poverty, if that's how you took it, I'd take that off the table. I am not pleading that. That's not what I was pointing out. I was simply pointing out that we have infrastructure, that we have no leeway on one way or the other. And I appreciate you bringing it back up, but that wasn't... It wasn't brought up for that purpose. Poverty was not the issue. It was profitability.
Financial feasibility for doing a project. But you're not the only one tonight that's actually brought that up.
Listen, well, wait a second, wait a second.
Sixty-foot hotels.
It's always... Listen, that's always going to be a factor, but...
No, I get it.
It's always a factor, okay. I'm not...
So, you need a variance for two lots?
No, I need a variance for one, two, three, four, five, six lots.
You need the variance for six lots?
Yeah.
There's six lots in the center. We've brought six...
Six for the wetlands.
We brought seven into conformity.
And five for slope.
We brought seven, but...
Could you tell me how... This is R-one-A?
R-one-A.
How many square feet in an acre?
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
Thank you.
You should have known, man.
I should have.
And to get to the point is to... All right, so, as to each particular lot, the variance is run anywhere from four percent to eighteen percent. They are not substantial. Now, and in terms of how the very... I would like to point out that this variance is for the purpose of... This calculation is for the purpose of calculating lot area. It doesn't necessarily regulate the development in slopes. This is simply to calculate lot area. In theory, if you can meet... If, in theory, you could have a lot that is fifteen thousand square foot and be able to put your house in a place where you won't be disturbing the slopes in any great manner. And this would really not serve any particular purpose whatsoever. What I would like to point out here is that if you look at the house locations that we've shown on the subdivision maps, all of them are up against the front lot line. Whether we grant, get the variance or not, those house locations are going to be exactly where they are now. We can't bring them any farther closer to the front than we are. Just so happens that those are the flattest portions of the property. So, we've designed this in such a manner where, number one, we aren't building in steep slopes. Number two, we put them in places where it's completely appropriate. We've put them in places where, no matter what the lot sizes of these things are, those house locations are going to be exactly where they're proposed now. So...
And what about Lot nine and ten? Why is the net lot area only twenty-eight thousand?
I don't have them memorized by number.
It's on the thing that you sent us.
Yeah, I'm looking.
They're the biggest percent variances going, but they're not even on there looking for a variance for them.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes.
I thought it's the top six.
No, no, no. They're the same lots, but for different... This is for wetlands, this is for slopes. So, this Lot thirteen doesn't have a slope variance.
Which lots?
It just has a wetland variance, but the others have both.
All right, so nine and ten are the ones...
Yeah, nine needs an eight percent variance. Ten needs a fourteen percent variance.
No.
For wetlands.
Seventeen and eighteen percent.
Those are... That's for the eighty percent.
For the slope.
That's the eighty percent rule. The eighty percent rule is...
All of the lots meet gross area.
I know.
When you deduct the wetlands and the slopes, six of them do not meet net buildable area and need variances.
You also have a separate rule that requires eighty percent of an acre being under fifteen percent or less.
I have a question that has nothing to do with what you've just been talking about, but I'm looking at the road by the water tower. The tank, it says water tank. It goes over a wetland. It seems odd that our code deducts for wetlands, you can't build on them, yet the road is going to be built over a wetland.
Specifically, it was desired to have a connection through for the road. We will be going, and at the time, they had gotten permitting through Army Corps with respect to going through that wetland, destroying that particular relatively small portion of wetland. We will be going through that procedure again.
So, so that really hasn't been approved yet? Because my concern was lot number eight, um, the road is there, and I'm thinking if a road is going through a wetland, you know, where's the water going to run off? Is it going to run off into lot number eight? And that house is right by the wetland, it's right in their front yard.
Well, that, the drainage is going to be controlled by the stormwater prev, pollution prevention plan. We have to comply with that. In terms of getting the wetlands permit, we're going to have to mitigate by reestablishing wetlands somewhere else, but.
On this property or s?
Yeah.
No, no, this is under what's going to require mitigation.
He'll explain.
The lot areas, well, the, the amount of wetlands we're destroying is small enough that I don't believe we have to do any mitigation, but we will have to reapply for the permit. There was a permit granted, I believe, in the.
Nineties?
Mid-nin, mid to late nineties. I, I, but that's an issue really we'd address more back with the planning board with respect to how we actually go constructing certain things, such as the stormwater facilities, which some of the rules have changed.
So, so did the planning board look at this environmental, environmentally, when they issued a negative declaration, or did they just say, yeah, it looks good?
Yes, no, they had looked at it.
I mean, I don't know what they did.
But.
Yes, they, they did that.
Okay.
Karen, I'm confused, you know, last month, I thought they were coming in because they could only get eleven lots.
Well, that was with the old, they, they reconfigured, they changed.
Changed the name.
Lot.
Now they need more variances than they did back then.
No.
Yeah, they did.
No, it's, it's.
No, what first map we presented had fourteen lots on it.
You could only get eleven.
All fourteen.
No, all of them needed a variance.
We came in with fifteen lot.
All of them?
Yeah, and some of them were like seventy-five percent.
I'm confused, I don't, that's just.
They reconfigured it in a way that reduced the number of lots that need variances.
All the outer lots are in compliance, it's the inner lots that now need a variance, but a much less degree of variance than previously. Before, some of the lots needed seventy-five percent.
Out of the six lots, if they didn't get their variance, how many lots could they make on that inner piece?
On the inner piece? Probably none. On the inner.
If they made them bigger.
No, the, the, the road is what separates the inner and outer.
Right.
So it, it's the inner ones that need variances. If we don't give variances, all they have is.
They need to be combined.
What if they have?
Oh, you mean combine?
What if they have to reconfigure the inner?
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying.
I want to know how many lots they could end up with in there if they reconfigured it the right way. Do they have to get rid of one lot and make everything bigger to comply?
I see what you're saying. That I don't know, that, that would be a question for you.
Well, the, the, the point we're making is it gains nothing. I mean, you know, you're strictly applying this, and, you know, each lot we're proposing is bigger than the minimum required, and the strict application of this calculation to compute lot area doesn't, doesn't serve any purpose. We're not destroy, we're not disturbing sleeps, deep slopes, the area, the variances are relatively nominal, are, are minimal, and for us to lose a lot for no, for no real purpose, it doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood, it doesn't have a detriment to the environment, and it doesn't, uh, it doesn't adversely affect the surrounding properties.
But that's really what it comes down to, losing one lot.
No, we're, we've already lost two lots.
And if you reconfigured the inside and forego one lot, all the other ones would be in compliance.
We don't know that.
That's true, but we're, we're here to get a variance, so we don't have to do that. The reason is, is because the, granting the variance will have no effect on the character of the neighborhood or having an adverse effect on surrounding properties, zero. We're building on lots that are way more than twice the size of what's built in that area, way more. These are substantial lots. These dwarf what's, what's predominant in that area. We're building in areas where the slopes, where we're not disturbing slopes. We're building in, and we're, by the way, the other thing.
You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to use the slopes.
Well, that's why we're here, we're not building, this isn't, it's not a slope variance, it's an area variance.
You know where I'm coming from, Karen?
I think so.
I'd like to make one other point, that look, your code doesn't distinguish between properties that are going to be serviced by wells and septics and properties that are going to be serviced by municipal water and sewer. When you're serviced by municipal water and sewer, you are inherently reducing the amount of disturbance to the lot. You don't even, you're significantly disturbing, site disturbance, and in this case, we are being serviced by municipal water and sewer. We don't have to go in the back of these pro, we moved the properties up to the front, we don't have to go in the back to put in septic systems. We're up front, and we have really substantially reduced the need to even come close to seriously disturbing the slopes on any of these properties. So the benefit to us, I need, I don't, I can't find any detriment to the community, to the surrounding neighborhood that outweighs the benefit to us, which is basically to build on lots that clearly are intended to keep the density where you guys want it, which is forty-three thousand, five sixty.
Are you going to be, when you, if, if this is passed and you clear, are you going to clear the road, the, the ring road, the loop road? In other words, I'm, I'm worried about all the slopes and trees and whatever, you can't clear all these trees, they have so much erosion, there won't be any.
That's part of the SWIP. That's part of the stormwater plan.
One of the things that we'll have to do with this project is provide a SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It's a plan that gets reviewed generally by the village. Secondarily, we then have to file it with the DEC.
Get their approval also?
We have to file it with them. You're an MS four community, it gets reviewed primarily by your community.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, I'm concerned with slopes, if you don't have plant, you know, there's tree, it, it's basically a, a ravine.
There, there is a.
You know, it's, it's a.
There is a whole series of regulations required by the state, how you go about producing a SWIP, and what you are supposed to be taking in the way of measures for erosion and sediment control, how you do your clearing work, how you do your erosion and sediment work, what you have to have in for permanent structures to maintain water quality, what, even who's going to end up with the ultimate maintenance and everything of any facilities that are built.
I think it seems that even if they were to combine lots and make everything comply and didn't need a variance, the road was still going to be built in that location.
Oh, right. And, and the wetland in the middle, I mean, it, you could see the slopes come down and.
But the planning board and the SWIP will have to address that.
Okay.
I just like, John, John mentioned to me earlier that he's familiar with the surrounding area. Uh, the houses that were generally built are generally similar in slope and terrain to what we're building in.
If, if you look at the surrounding subdivisions, you go for a drive up in the neighborhood, and you start realizing, yes, you have streets that are going down, it's pretty steep grades, you have lots that obviously they flattened out areas, popped in houses. If anything, this is going to be less intrusive to the land than what was developed around it. And what we did to, to kind of provide a, uh, two views of it, really, we have the tax map, and we've overlaid exactly what our subdivision would look like in terms of the lot layout. And what immediately comes to my eye looking at it is the overall lot size that we have is substantially bigger than most of what's surrounding us. And the land quality, if you examine the neighborhood, before those houses were put up, the land quality was very similar to what we have here. You can look at the overall grades between various streets, it, it, it's just that it's already a developed neighborhood, you don't think of it the same way. We've also provided that on an aerial photo, just where the site is in general, a lot of people who are visual instead of reading maps, we find aerial photos of something people can look at, and they, they start realizing, they look around, they say, hmm, a lot of houses around this place. It's not that we are just doing something that's vastly different from what's in this area.
Do you still have the right of way over the Selig property?
I'm, I'm sorry, which right of way are you?
The right of way on the driveway, I, um, from, uh, from Hill Avenue, the road that comes in. It's a right of way.
Yes.
And it's supposed to be a right of way on the Selig property there?
Yeah, just to the, uh, south of Wigan Hill Road is where we're coming in.
Yeah.
Off of Hill, yes.
Okay. Because that, that was granted quite a while ago, I was, those people living alive?
Looks like they own it.
Oh.
Apparently she is.
Okay, sorry about that.
Boy. All right, let's, let's move this along.
Uh, we have, here, John, you want to talk?
I mean, briefly, if you get a chance to look at the neighborhood, you'll realize we don't have much in the way of significant visual impacts. Um, because of the larger lots and the fact that, in general, most of the rear portions of the lots are not going to be cleared, uh, there would be no need to, they're large lots, those are where we tend to have the more difficult land in terms of grades, areas where we're not going to be working. Most of what we're going to put in on this is not going to be particularly visible. We will have a couple of houses near the cul-de-sac that you'll be able to certainly see, other residential houses, that's what we're proposing here, but they're not out of character with the neighborhood. You're not up at a location where there would be any clear cutting to, to create views that people are going to suddenly be able to see this place.
Any more questions from the board?
I'd just like to ask the board, I mean, we've, we've really, I mean, listen, from when we were here in March to now, we did make a significant effort to try to really mitigate and bring down the, the intensity of what we were asking for here. We worked from where we could, got a real practical difficulty in the center there, but, you know, these are, I mean, we've done the best we could, I don't, and I just can't see where these variances are going to really affect anything in the neighborhood, so.
If I may also point out, uh, prior to doing some of this, we met with Dennis Lindsay, we went over what we had in mind, how we were approaching this. Uh, before this went back, we wanted to discuss this with the planning board with respect to any potential impact with Seeker. Dennis reviewed it, I believe you, you've seen a copy of his review, so it's not something that we're doing out in the dark or that he's not aware of. His comments from our perspective were very minimal, uh, it wasn't anything that we're not aware of in terms of issues we have to address with the planning board, and we really didn't see anything in his comments that created substantial issues with respect to the variances we're seeking.
And if I can ask one question, did Dennis provide you with a memo?
Yes.
Is that something that's available for us to look at? I mean, is something the board's considering? I have, I didn't, wasn't provided with a copy, if I could look at that during.
I think it's the same one that went to planning.
Was it an internal memo, uh, Mike?
I assumed you had it. If, if I may, I think this is, no, this is the one that he had produced before he actually went to the planning board last time, I don't.
Which memo are you, Jay, which memo are you speaking of when you say Dennis provided you with a memo? I thought you just, you were all talking.
We have, we have a memo dated April twelfth that was a review of these particular plans.
April twelfth.
I thought you, in your packet, I thought you provided us with a copy of the memo from Dennis dated April twentieth, no?
I don't know what you're talking, do you? We have one dated April twelfth. Is that what you have?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I appreciate, okay. I just wanted, I didn't know if you had submitted something since then.
Yeah.
But that's, Mike, that's a factual memo, that's not a guidance memo, is it?
It's just their findings.
Dennis.
He can get it from the building department.
It's the history, materials reviewed.
No, I'm saying, Dennis provides guidance memos to the planning board. Is, is this his guidance memo, or this is just a factual memo?
That's the tech memo we sent to the planning board, I believe.
He described how the plans have been changed.
Right. I think it was just a description of what's changed and.
Yeah, we submitted it because we wanted you to be up to date on what had been presented to the planning board. I, I thought there was something new in it.
No.
I know, let's get it to public comment.
Is there anyone, anybody have anything else to say before the public? All right. Anyone in the first row? No, there is no one in the first row. Second row? They all went home, they gave up. Second row, anybody?
Andrew.
Third row?
I'm Lisa Prickto, this is John Prickto, we live on Jefferson Street, right around the corner from the development. I think I have to agree with you, one thing that I was thinking is I don't really hear any compelling reasons why we would need to grant a variance, because what's the advantage to the, the town? I guess the tax income would be the only thing I could think of, the property tax. I appreciate the effort to make the lots bigger, I like to hear that, that, you know, was welcome news. I do, you know, live in the part of Jefferson Street that there are some steep grades, there are some newer houses, I'm in one of the older houses, but I'll tell you right now, those basements flood all the time. When there's heavy rains, my backyard is like a swamp. So I can't imagine with the additional water, I mean, it's got to go somewhere once it's displaced from the development, and, you know, I would assume that the, the rules are in place for a reason about the slopes and the, you know, the wetlands, so that was my only concern. Did you want something?
Thank you.
I mean.
Could you state your name, please?
John Prickto, John Prickto, twenty-seven Jefferson Street. And despite what you might hear, I've actually, the first time I saw this area was thirty-eight years ago now. I remember thirty-eight years ago, being on the top of Route Six there and seeing what I thought was absolutely beautiful location, absolutely beautiful. I don't know how else to describe it. I've owned property up here for thirty years, and, uh, you know, to be honest, if you stand upon that, look out now and look, you know, see what you see, it's, uh.
A little different.
It's, it's a mess, it's a mess. So it's, and, and the other word for it is greed, it's just greed. You can see, there's, there's not a hilltop now that you can, in, in the near sort of vision range, which hasn't been clear cut, hasn't had houses piled on top of it. And like I say, it's pure greed, it's, you know, it's our learned gentleman's client, and people like them have just been trying to put as many houses into the area as they can. Uh, I, I did have a question, I mean, when was this property sold? I remember, I remember the sign going up, and it can't have been more than two or three years ago, right? When was this property sold last?
I think it was two, was it two thousand sixteen?
Two thousand sixteen.
I believe.
Yeah, it was, it was recent, because I even thought about, almost thought about buying it myself.
Many, many times, yeah, it's changed ownership quite a few times.
Changed hands a couple of times already.
Since two thousand sixteen?
No. Before that.
Okay.
This is probably the third owner?
Oh, at least.
Yeah.
But when they bought this property in two thousand sixteen, they knew what the rules were. They got a good deal on it, I think I heard the price, they got a good deal, they knew what the zoning was, and there is absolutely no reason why they couldn't have designed this development to adhere to the zoning rules. Why didn't they adhere to the zoning rules? Because they want to make more money, because they want to pile more houses in, and they, they're ten thousand square feet short, or, is what it looks like. Uh, you hear, you hear that, you know, you see an aerial view like that, the troll with aerial views is they flatten the, the perspective, you can't, you can't tell the grade from there. You can't really tell a wetland, you can see one lake. It's a wetland, I mean, at night, and let me say, when, when I bought my house, which is now eighteen years ago, so when I bought the house eighteen years ago, that, I had an uninterrupted view behind me of a hill with trees on it, which I still have, I had an uninterrupted view at the front of a hill, Shonamont Mountain, a beautiful untouched swathe of, of hillside. I don't have that anymore, you know, Brigadoon, which frankly do not like the look of, has been put there, and, and Brigadoon, I mean, for all I know, it's, it's well within, you know, it didn't have variances, I have no idea whether Brigadoon had variances or not, but to my eyes, it's ugly, you know? There was, so, I, I mean, you could say I'm biased, I mean, they talk about, will this change the quality of, the, the neighborhood is, is delightful. I mean, I've lived there eighteen years. One of the nice things about the area is the hill, is the unbroken hill, it's the sound of the frogs at night in the wetlands. We've already, so I, we described as, I know I used the word ravine last time, it's, it's more of, like, the inside of a crater, right? It's completely surrounded, you go down into the area, and there are steep slopes there, I, I can't tell from the plan, you know, they don't have to go too far back before they're going to be hitting, you know, a steep slope. It absolutely is a steep slope, so I, I, I take the statement that there's no impact on the slopes with a pinch of salt, to be honest with you. And the wetland is certainly, it's certainly wetland, it's, it's in a depress, it's depression, it's in a depression, so there's, there's no way it's not a wetland. And again, I can say, I just come back to greed, I don't see why we have to grant the vari, I mean, a property that was bought so recently, knowing what the rules were, why now? You know, why now is it being designed in a way that breaks the rules? I, I just don't understand why, why that was done. I mean, they knew what the deal was, and I won't repeat myself, but you get the idea. Uh, and really, that's all I want to say. I, I mean, I, I, I realize that this, this view is, you know, this house is going to be put in there, and I accept that, um, but I don't see why, why any variance is, is required here. You can, you can put perfectly good houses in a perfectly nice area without a variance. So I'm just saying, no, I don't think a variance should be granted for the, to the applicant. I think that's about it, really. Anything else we want to say? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Anyone?[1680.81] Anyone else in that row? Next row, anyone need to speak? Anyone standing? No? Oh, all right. Oh. I think I know who you are.
Hi, I'm Karen Aliva Selig. I live at 8 Hill Avenue. And I'm very familiar from the beginning with these, this property. And when, you know, Alan Lippman had it, who actually is the person I have this agreement with about what to do with my driveway. I don't know what to do about this at this point, but I have a written agreement from Mr. Lippman here about providing me with a driveway since you're going to cut off the access to my house with the road unless anything has changed. But aside from that, I'm confused because back in March or whatever, when I first received the letters about these variances being discussed, the letter clearly said that the property had 11, was designed for 11 lots, which I assume is what it was purchased for when it went on auction that day. So, speaking, you know, I totally agree with the last, John, is that your name, who spoke? You, you know, it was purchased knowing exactly what the situation was. And at the first meeting here, it was clearly brought out that the road was going to be too expensive for them to only put 11 houses in there, that they needed more. Originally, it said they were looking for 14. When I got this notice and it was 13, I was like, okay, so did two already get approved, or what? I'm not, you know, I'm confused. But whatever. I don't understand.
Me either.
Thank you. But I don't understand how you're talking about these inner lots that have wetlands and slopes, and you're giving figures for how much variance each needs. So when you multiply the total, I don't understand how that could have no impact on anything. And also, lastly, as far as my driveway goes, Mr. Lippman, you know, said that he would provide me, as a priority, a driveway so that I could get to my house if and when this road starts being built. And I hate to even bring up a fence, but he said that he would either put up, you know, that ugly orange fencing like they do when roads, you know, alongside my property, so I have something there, or provide me with what that would cost if I wanted to put up a fence. But I don't think I want to come here and talk about a fence, to tell you the truth. But I am concerned about my driveway.
Well, that would be a planning board issue.
Okay.
So make sure you go to them when they get back in front of them.
Okay. I wasn't aware of when they were over there.
If that deals with Mr. Lippman.
Yeah, it was incorporated, I think, into the old subdivision approval years ago.
I mean, this thing is from 1995. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is William Byer. I live at 7 Jefferson Street. Your water tank is behind our property. I wanted to just bring up a few points, questions of, seem like either conflicting statements or statements I don't believe are true. Well, the first thing I wanted to ask is, how many homes does the current code actually allow to be built on that site? Is it 11 or 10? Do we have a specific number?
Well, it's one acre zoning, so I guess if, however they can divide it, however they can divide it with or without variances, that would be the amount.
So they've got 13 and they need seven variances, right?
Six. Six.
So there's seven lots that are approved that they don't need a variance for.
Okay.
So they could build seven houses right now.
Because there's a tremendous amount of numbers being thrown around, and those numbers can be staggering and can be twisted to whatever they want. And to simplify it, if, if, they could only build, say, 10 homes, and they're asking for 13 homes, that's a 30% increase. So if somebody in this room, Robin, not picking on you, or she weighed 100 pounds, if she, if she added 30% weight, she goes to 130 pounds. That's a huge difference.
We'd have to roll her in here.
If I make $100,000 and I get a 30% raise, that's a huge difference. So you're talking about a minimum 30% increase in homes that he wants. And if it's even less than that, you're talking 45, 50% increase. And those are the simplest numbers to gauge your decision by. I saw two different numbers. They said they're not crying poverty in the variance application. There was some questions and answers that had to be answered. And in a project description, it specifically said that the cost of building the road cannot justify less than 14 homes. So what that says to me is if they can't get 14 homes, less than 14 homes, they can't afford to put the road in and they can't afford to build the project. And at the first meeting, the statement was made that the project is not going to be feasible if they can build 11 homes. So on one hand, they say 14, on the other hand, they say 11. And they're crying poverty for that. And I agree with what was said before, that it's not poverty, it's greed. And if it was that important to your client, and Jay, you know, no offense to you, I want to see him. I want to talk to him, not to you. We have to sit here for hours. Where is he? If it's that important to him, why isn't he here to talk to us and to have some discussion? So that bothers me a little bit. If it was that important, he should be here. So to me, then it's, maybe it isn't that important and it's just simple greed. Let me see how much more I can squeeze out of the zoning board. Something was also mentioned at the first meeting that there hadn't been a cost analysis done yet of what it would cost to put the roads in due to the weather. And a promise was made at that meeting that that was going to be done and given to the board. And I'm wondering, has that been done? What-
I don't know. Not to this board. Not to this board.
Does that have to go to the planning board or to the zoning board?
Yeah.
I'd like to know if they're crying poverty and if, where are those numbers of what it would cost them versus what they would make on the sale of everything?
Probably went to the planning board.
I would think, yeah.
Well, I'm curious to know if it's been submitted, so I'd like, how do we get that information from, from the planning board?
Yes.
All right. Another question I had was, at the first meeting, there was some discussion about whether the property would be vested or grandfathered in, and I think it was decided that it's not vested. But if I remember correctly, at the end of the meeting, some searching was going to be done. That Jay had said, according to what he had, the village comprehensive plan said that anything that's pre-approved or that had a substantial design investment is grandfathered in. So I don't know what-
This had preliminary approval, not final.
Right, preliminary approval would be grandfathered in. So that's what he was claiming, and has any answer been given on that?
I guess not, because he's here.
No, that's why they're here.
So, I mean, so it's not grandfathered in?
The town does not regard this as grandfathered, no.
Okay. And again, the simple maths should be your basic guide to, when you break all the numbers down. And I think 30, 40, 50% increase in homes is far too many for that area and for the surrounding homes. And it was also mentioned that the foliage of the trees would prevent the homes from being seen, and that's not true at all. In the wintertime, I can see all the way through the entire proposed development to the homes at the back of Ranana. So that makes no sense at all, that statement. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Oh, he's coming up.
You got 30 seconds, Tom.
I didn't even see, I was going to stop. I didn't see him.
Thomas Flood, 12 Van Buren Court. I live in the, one of the cul-de-sacs that's in the range of this. I'm definitely against any type of variance changes here, any approvals. The team of people that bought this property clearly knew there was a set of rules and regulations in place. They got it at a low cost. They clearly said last meeting, financially, they couldn't make it work unless they hit a certain number. So I agree with what Billy said. I think the bit, one of the other issues here is, we already have a water problem up in our area. Where the water tank is, and if you go, I would guess it would be west and north of it, towards the homes, towards Van Buren Court, there's, they've had to put a drain in back of one of the houses there to get the water out. I've only lived there 28 years, I think. You probably, guys would know because they're all shuttered when we came in. But since we've been there, the water has gotten worse every year with drainage. Ranana Park has been there, I think, since the 30s. And I'm not sure what kind of drainage mitigation they have up there, but certainly there's water going in to basically a pool. And that's what this area is. It's not really suitable for any type of homes, quite honestly, because I'm sure they're going to maybe consider put basements in, or they're going to have to put them on a slab. There is a tremendous amount of water. Their proposal, where their area is, is approximately 914 feet above sea level. The next, Fillmore is at 807. Then Van Buren goes up a little bit in the back, where I live, to 835. I've done every piece of that property where I live, and I will tell you, there are million rocks and shale. There's certainly springs. So far, I've had to put in three different driveways because of the water that comes out. And there's certain properties on Van Buren at least where the water never stops. So, you know, it's a consideration that we might open up a water bottling plant at some point, because we'll make some money. We're going to need it as we run out of money. But, you know, all kidding aside, I think, is it John? He said this was a fool's errand. Truly, it was a, it was a land grab at a low cost. They're really trying to push this through. I think greed is clearly, you know, the objective is to make as much money as possible. They shouldn't have bought it if they didn't think they could make money on seven houses, eight houses. And even at that, it's not a desirable location because of the topology of the area. I don't know how the heck they're going to fix the drainage and how they were going to divert the water to go to the right place. Where would it go? So we would have to disrupt Wigan Hill, and we would have to disrupt further down. It's like we're hitting teachers on the way. We've gone out to the next teacher around the curve and buy her property. So it's a real mess up there, the whole drainage. Lincoln Court, which is, was not talked about, is at the bottom of a cliff. That was one thing you said, John, right?
Yes.
That was correct. Some of the topology is similar. Lincoln Court is the only area that is similar to it because they shouldn't have built those homes because the basements in those homes also fill up with water. So it's a real issue. So the last thing, I don't think they want to do a new environmental study, but clearly, if this thing's going to move forward, even with five houses, even with seven houses, they absolutely need to do an environmental study because it will have an impact on the homes in the neighborhood. Wish I was briefer, but had to get some points out. Thank you.
No, no problem.
And we appreciate you guys spending so late all the time, and we know that it's difficult. And I want to say also, I think if the landowners thought this was important, they should have made some time in their day to be here tonight. Because we all thought it was important. And quite a large group from our neighborhood came out, and if they couldn't come out, we told them we would talk for them. So we hope that at the end of the day, when you guys look through this, that you won't grant the variances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone from the board? Do we need a motion to quote? Oh! I wasn't quick enough. I wasn't, I wasn't. No, 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 go ahead.
Yes, there's been a few statements to the public that I really think are inaccurate. And I want to just clarify some of the history on this property. This site, over 22 years ago, at that time, it was 15 lots that were approved. For a variety of reasons, it didn't get built at the time. There were a number of issues with the site. At the time, you could have gotten a great many more lots on this. They allowed lots that were comparable to the other lots around in the area. But the issue was, there was a capacity issue with sewage treatment plants. So we got an approval. The approval was for 15 lots. They were relying on septic wells. One of the reasons you had these fairly large substantial lots. Every year or less, the applicant was back in before the planning board extending the approval on the preliminary approval. They kept that going. You're right, the property changed hands. Those people who were buying it went and said, oh, okay, the preliminary approval is extended. We still have something here. We have something vested. If you go reading through the town's comprehensive plan that was looked at, and also the generic impact statement, when they were adopting new zoning in 2011, they said these things would be grandfathered. They did not, however, enact that into law. They just said that they were going to do that. They didn't do it. Mind you, we now have a client who comes in. He says, I'd like to actually get going with this project. I want to extend the preliminary, get the finalization done on it. At which point the board says, well, wait, the zoning, seven years ago, the zoning changed. You have to comply with it. Now, the biggest change to the zoning was very simple. They pushed it up to 43,560 square foot lots, one acre lots. But they also altered their formula for slopes. They made it a lot more complicated. You now have breakdowns of slopes in different ranges, how much credit you get, or how much of the deduction you have, slopes in those different ranges. The first thing we did is we tried to evaluate the lots we had, which were already oversized. They were generally bigger than what was required. But when you applied the new slope zoning, and mind you, we still had an old slope zoning. We had made those compensations. We ended up with some lots that didn't make it. Some of the issues that they put into the zoning also, besides having the deductions per slope, where you need 80% of 43,560, which is a little over 34,000 square feet, has to be available on the lot and under 15,000 square feet. That's not something we have on a few little lots on here, the ones that are being referred to in the inner loop. We did not originally have that ones on the outer loop. What we tried to do to reduce some of the impacts and the number of variance we were seeking, we realized that we had two lots. They had a substantial wetland in them. This is the ones closest to the water tower, but on the outside loop up on that end. We basically combined those two. We took some of what we had for surplus area, portioned it out to the other lots. We also realized that we have stormwater regulations that have changed rather drastically in the last few years. We're going to have to accommodate that. We will accommodate that. We are essentially taking one lot area, and that's being dedicated for stormwater detention, meaning water quality, being able to address the stormwater issues. So overall, on the outside, we dropped two lots, reconfigured things, now we don't really need any area variances. For people to sit here and say, oh, well, you know, the buyer knew what he was getting. Yeah, he thought he was buying something that already had an approval on it. He had been before, there had been people here presenting that you could keep extending your approval, and he figured you complete it and go to work.
But Karen, he needs to be addressing us.
Please address us, sir.
Okay.
Where was that?
So that is, okay, I'm sorry about that. I should be addressing the board.
We're listening.
That is, we looked into how to solve that. Basically, we are going with the idea that, okay, we have to try and meet the new zoning, but we are trying to do it in a way that still meets certain, admittedly, goals of the developer. We do know where we have to put a road in terms of how to deal with the wetlands, minimizing the impacts to the property. We've reduced the impacts, but we can't address everything perfectly within this rather complicated formula that the town has derived for, all the slope deductions and the minimum areas. Now, there are some good things. One, there is now adequate sewer capacity. This project will be put onto sanitary sewers. We will not have to deal with septic on land that could be difficult. We will also have to disturb a lot less land, because we no longer have to figure out, we took a lot of the areas where septic fields were going to go in in the approval project, and that's where we shifted the house to. So we're going to end up with less land disturbance than we were looking at before. We're really trying to see what we can do to bridge the gap between how the rules changed and what our client thought he had.
Thank you.
John, just one quick point here, though. I mean, I've said this, I said it last time, I'm saying it this time. They were very specific at the planning board that there was nothing vested, and that the new zoning applies. And I have to assume, I am not an engineer, but I have to assume if they changed the zoning, it was with the idea that they would make it better for the people around them as well. Would you disagree with that statement?
I would say that zoning is frequently driven by political goals.
Let's not get into that.
Well, it's, there's got to be some hydraulics to this somewheres.
All right, no. The zoning changed.
Zoning is driven by your master plan. It's driven by your comprehensive plan. The zoning is supposed to accomplish the purposes that are set forth.
In your comprehensive plan. Okay, to the, to that, yes, that's, that's, that's the purpose of it. So, and we've, we've said on more than one occasion now that we're here because we don't have any vested rights.
any vested rights. Don't have any. Okay, so the comment that was made earlier about what was said at the last, that I said at the last meeting, or that was said, that was reflected in the comprehensive plan that these projects with preliminary approval would be grandfathered, didn't happen. We acknowledge that. That's why we're here. It's not an issue. It's not an issue. We're here because we need variances. All right, if I can address a couple of the comments real quickly here. Number one, there was a comment that water's gonna be displaced from this property, there's gonna be flooding because of drainage off of this site. Not gonna happen. Stormwater prevention plan requires that we not, that we are not allowed to drain any more water off of the site after improvement than is being drained off of that site today. And usually, when you do the SWIP, it's gonna improve the drainage, not increase it. We are not allowed to increase drainage off of this site. It's prohibited. Number two, there was, the question was asked about the cost analysis for the road. After we left this meeting, after we redrew this plan, and after we reduced the number of variances that we needed for lots by a half, we went from all lots to now the six interior lots, didn't feel it was an issue anymore. I've explained what the context that I meant to convey, which was that we are stuck with this particular infrastructure. The cost is the cost. The cost is something my client's gonna have to live with. It's our burden to prove to you that we're either entitled to these variances because the benefit to my client is not outweighed by any detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. Which I don't see. I still haven't heard it. I know there's been, there was comments made that because we need a variance, there has to be a detriment to the public. That is not true. Detriments to the public and to the character of the neighborhood are proved by empirical data. And unless you get that, you are not allowed to consider generalized community comment in terms of determining whether or not we're entitled to a variance. That's absolute law. And that's, I haven't heard anything other than that. I find it extremely unfair for people to speculate and assign motivation to my client that he's acting out of greed. You want to assign that, there's nothing for you to suggest that. We are here because we are allowed by law to be here. We're allowed to apply for area variances, just like everybody else who was here tonight is allowed to apply for variances. You want to assign, you want, it's really a serious allegation to sit there and assign something like that, when we're allowed to be here as a matter of law. And we're here asking for variances, which numerically are not 30%, 40%, 50%. They are per lot, because the area calculations are per lot, and they vary from 4% to 18%. And we've, I believe we completely demonstrated that we are not interfering with slopes. Whether you grant the variances or not, these house locations are gonna be exactly where they are now, and that they are not being built in areas where you're gonna have disturbance that's gonna detrimentally affect the area. The SWIP is the second, is the absolute protection for that. If you disturb slopes, typically, you're increasing drainage. That's the whole concern with disturbing slopes. You're creating drainage issues on the site. If you do that, you still have to comply with SWIP, and that's why the SWIP is so important. It prevents any increase of drainage off of the site when you disturb slopes that are 20% or 1%. You cannot increase drainage off of the site. That's the purpose of the SWIP, and that's the protection to the public. So, you know, there was comments that we were here, we're breaking the rules. No, we're not breaking the rules. We're here because we're complying with the rules. We have every right to be here. To suggest otherwise, it's not fair. Now, I haven't heard anything of an empirical nature, anything of data contradicting what we have presented to you in terms of exactly what the scope of these variances are, and what the effect on the character of the neighborhood or the surrounding properties are gonna be. There is no detrimental effect. Short of that, if you don't have that, it's pretty clear that you can't balance something against the benefit to my client. If there is no detriment, it's a balancing test. If you got, the detriment has to outweigh the benefit to my client. If you can't find it, it doesn't outweigh it.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to make a point.
Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on the board? You want a motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Wow.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We'll discuss this at the end. The end. It's coming.
I know you should've.
Can't we postpone Baker Town until next month?
They've been sitting all night, waiting.
Oh, I didn't know they were here. Do we have to answer, do we have to do all these tonight?
The, we had Pulver on the agenda.
John, John.
Hold on. Sir, sir.
Husband White.
Mr. Pulver was on the agenda. He is not on this evening because he's requested that he go through the planning board before he comes back. So I'm gonna need a motion to close that public hearing, and then we'll renotice it when it comes back.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closing it till he is ready to come back to the board, and then we'll renotice it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You got that, Jessica?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
You got enough paper?
I know. Okay, next public.
It's her fault.
Next public hearing is Baker Town Road Condominiums. Public hearing for an interpretation pursuant to Section 310-44C, three and four. Applicant proposes to construct an emergency access road on vacant land, whereas pursuant to Section 310-7 of the Bulk Regulations, an emergency access road is not listed as a permitted use. Said property is located in the R2A zoning district at the corner of County Route 105 and Acres Road in Highland Mills, and known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 225, Block 1, Lot 1. The applicant is present?
Yes, good evening.
Terry Rice for Executive Boulevard, Suffolk for the applicant.
I'm sure everybody's tired like I am, so I'll do this as quickly as I can. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Baker Town Road condominium that was developed a number of years ago. As a part of that, the developer intended to construct an emergency access road, and the rally dharma, I'm saying it wrong, I'm sorry. We'll describe it to you in a minute in a little more detail from Leonard Jackson's office. The location where they intended to build the emergency access road was eventually found out to be wetland.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone a little bit?
I'm sorry, I thought it was.
Thank you.
Was eventually found to be wetlands and wasn't feasible as a result. So they proposed to do an emergency access road through this piece of property that's before you tonight. Now, the condominiums have been developed and sold to individual people. The developer owns this particular piece of property, and if it's approved, that property would be conveyed to the condominium association.
Can you stop for just a second?
Sure.
You're talking about the new access road.
Yes.
Has one owner?
Yes.
Because every place I've seen, it seems like it has three.
Well, yeah. My question was.
It has one. There was some uncertainty about who the actual owner was, and if there was any confusion about that, we of course apologize. The owner of that piece of property is Acres Road 2 Holdings LLC. Mr. Lehman was the principal of that, and that's why his name appears on some of the documents. So, you know, it's kind of an odd situation. If that was in one community, there would be no problem with dissolving the lot line and conveying the property, but of course, we have the artificial municipal boundary that exists between the two pieces of property, and that's how the issue originally arose. I got involved in this around November 1st of last year. The owner was somewhat unsure about how to proceed. They had some idea that they had to go to the zoning board of appeals, but they weren't quite sure why or what for. I had a telephone conversation with the building inspector and the village attorney, and it was agreed that I would write a letter to the building inspector requesting an interpretation. And I did that in November. It was never answered. I eventually had a meeting with the building inspector and the village attorney in January, when I was told for the first time that the planning board wanted the applicant to go to the zoning board of appeals to get an interpretation as to whether or not this was a permitted use. So that's why we're here. That was the first time we found out. And of course, the applicant just wants to go through, go through the site plan review process with the planning board so they can look at the proposal and do whatever they think is appropriate with respect to that. Because obviously, this is an important application to the condominiums because they need an emergency access, for obvious reasons. And the emergency access would be gated and so forth, so it wouldn't be used for anything other than emergencies. So, what are we really dealing with here? Basically, our position is that a road is not a use as you would think of a normal use in a zoning law. You may have, like you've dealt with tonight, you may have a shopping center or a hotel as a listed use, but an access road, especially an emergency access road, we do not believe is a use. And the fact that it isn't specifically listed in the zoning law doesn't mean that it's impermissible. And for example, driveways are not listed as a permitted use. And that's essentially what this really is. It's a driveway, but it doesn't even go to the level of being a driveway because it's for emergency access only. Now, I have here a report, an affidavit, that was done by a professional planner, John Lang, if I could give copies to the board.
Well, we can't, you have to turn that into the building department. We can't accept things the evening of the presentation.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
You're building an emergency access road, 30 feet wide, with curbs on both sides, streetlights. It looks a little more than.
White striping.
It looks more than an emergency access road.
That's all it's intended to be. If the planning board directs that it be different than that, then that's what it's gonna be.
Tell me, explain to me how they, the original access road was over a wetland? Was it built over the wetland, or is it?
Originally, the access road was proposed to connect to the Acres Road, just north of the property, and they didn't build it right away. And once they started constructing, they encountered wetlands.
Didn't they research that there were wetlands there prior to the construction?
No, I don't think so. When they started building, they just found out there were wetlands.
That's the problem. Okay, that's, I just needed to know that.
From your question, I understand that you're looking skeptically at this. It's supposed to be only an emerg, well, I'm telling you, it's supposed to be only an emergency access road, and.
Yeah, I've heard that, too.
Fire trucks only require 26 feet, why would 30 feet need necessary?
Well, that's why the applicant is in front of the planning board, and if the planning board says do 24 feet, that's what they'll do. It will be gated, and it will not be used for anything other than emergency access.
Tell us why you believe that this emergency access road is not a use.
Okay, well, that's why I did want to give you the affidavit from the planner, and I'll turn this into the building department, I assume, for that reason, and you'll keep the public hearing open, so that I can submit this. Well, he relates, Mr. Lang has been a planner for many communities and is well experienced. He relates essentially that emergency access roads are treated like driveways generally in zoning. He relates some of the definitions in the zoning law, including driveway and driveway entrance or exit. He says that under the common planning and zoning practice, roads are not considered an individual use, but rather as a means of vehicular access to permitted uses. He says that the specification for roads and so forth are spelled out in the site plan regulations, but roads are not considered a use. And he comes to the conclusion that it's clear that the, in the context of this specific project, that the requirement for an emergency access road has even less standing than a normal access road would have. I'm just paraphrasing here and jumping through different parts of it. Emergency access are purely a device to ensure that access can be provided for emergency responders, or perhaps for an evacuation, should the primary access road be disrupted. So he gives the opinion, in his objective professional opinion, that the emergency access road here is not a use, and that it's proposed under the zoning law. He also said that if the board considered that it actually is a use, that it fits under the definition of an accessory use. And he goes through his analysis there, because it's clearly a subordinate use to the condominium. It's unquestionably customarily incidental, and under the definition in the zoning law, it's actually permitted, even though it's on a separate lot, because a lot is defined as a parcel of land coincident with a lot or lots shown on a map of record. So it's his opinion that in either event, it would be permitted, and he also thinks that it makes good planning sense to permit an emergency access road that would be rarely used, and it would provide vital access in those rare instances when it is needed.
Did you consider any other location?
My understanding is that they have.
What were they?
There was the one that was a connection with the Acres Road, and there was another one parallel to that, but there were the same issues. So this was the.
The one through Acres Road was built, though, I guess.
It was not built.
Well, there's a road, there's a road there with a gate across it right into the condominiums.
I'm not aware of that.
On this location?
Yes. And from Acres Road.
They started clearing it, but they haven't finished it.
No, it's there, and it's gated.
On it on Monday.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
And I saw it also, I saw it also. Also, I drove through that development, and I went down, I think it was Deneve, I'm not sure if I'm saying it correctly, and I turned, made a right onto Baker Town. And if you look at the right side of Baker Town, the trees are all cleared there, it would be very easy to build a road there. I don't know if it's the same owner, but if it isn't, the owner should, you know.
I'm sorry.
It would be right in the Village of Curious Joel.
Could you describe the location for me?
Sure, when you come out of Deneve Road or Court, whatever the name of it is, and you make a right onto Baker Town. So it's Deneve, and then the next right would be Acres Road. Between Acres and Deneve is a wooded area on the right that has been cleared. The trees are laying there. It's relatively flat, you know, all things considered in this area. And it's a short distance, and could go right into the development. I was wondering if that was considered.
I will check. My understanding was that this was the only feasible location, but I'll be happy to check and see if that's feasible or why it isn't feasible.
And then need to find out what that road is on Acres. That comes from Acres Road, it goes right into that condominium development. There's a double gate at the end, and it looks like, I didn't look what was on the other end, other side of the gate, but it looks like some kind of a parking area. You know, it's a clearing, it's not somebody's home. It's maybe a business, or I'm not really sure what it is.
Right, I'll be happy to get the answers to those for you. Okay.
All right. It just amazes me that this wasn't planned for when it was being built. And I, you know, I looked up the zoning in KJ, and there's a zoning code for synagogues, ritual baths, public schools, private schools, colleges, universities, cemeteries, other places of worship. And they discuss the ingress and egress that's required, but nothing for residential. I don't know why, but that's the way it is. So that surprises me. Why, why is this road going through Monroe?
Well, as I suggested, it's our understanding that that's the only available way to do it.
So you need approval from Monroe also?
We may.
What do you mean, you may?
If it goes through, if it goes through Monroe, we may.
If you, if we approve it, you then have to get approval from Monroe. You can't just build it because we approved it through Woodbury.
I understand.
What position Monroe takes, whether it requires a plan.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. All right.
Since Terry has to get you more information anyway.
Yes, I would request then, and I certainly want to file these affidavits. I wasn't aware that you wouldn't accept them the night of the meeting. So I would request that you adjourn this to the next meeting so I can find out answers to the questions that you had, and so that I can file this, so you have this affidavit before you.
And in the meantime, I looked at various provisions of the zoning chapter, and I'd like to give you an opinion letter that outlines those and give you some advice before you take action on this. So I recommend you put it off.
Is that something you would share with me, Michael?
Depends upon, some of it maybe, but some of it will probably be privileged.
Okay.
So should I have a motion to keep the public hearing open, extend it till next month, till we have more information?
I make a motion to extend the hearing to the next month, the June 13th.
Wait a minute. Should I have public, I should have, wait a minute. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application tonight, since you've sat here since 7:30? Anyone? All right. Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I said it. You got that, Jessica?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll continue this public hearing next month when we have more information.
Thank you, folks. I promised I'd be quick, see?
Right. Thank you so much for being patient.
All right.
We have no building inspector's report, so we will now deliberate on the closed public hearings.
Did we close? Did we? We did.
Like three minutes, three minutes?
Oh, yeah. We'll take, we're going to take a little break here.
Why did we keep that open?
That's it. Okay. One down. All right. So.
Two fences. Central property and 39 LLC in that order.
Did we close? We did close.
That's what we just kept, only, that's going to be.
This is, that isn't built. It's, I don't know if it's paved or if it's just packed, but it's definitely a road. And that's, I don't know. I don't know.
No, I hadn't, I always, yeah.
Listen, in the force, in the proceeding.
Oh, in Monroe. Oh, we did.
We did. All right. We're supporting the control. And it was just sort of, I think it's on the...
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Don't worry about it.
Are you, municipalities allowed? Are properties allowed to build on their land, something like that, that's another community? I guess, I don't know.
I always read a lot of different places.
I don't know. It just seems...
This is general, this is from a relatively recent case, here in New York.
All right.
So here, since what's, this is a large lot, single-family zone in Woodbury. This multifamily condominium, it wouldn't be allowed.
This is, it's a, it's a two-way zoning where the...
Yeah. So the general rule that the broker can use a road, only if the user... Things are, even if it's a road, it doesn't even have to be a person within its own court.
Oh, so we've, oh, okay. So, gotcha, gotcha.
That's the general rule. But then you have to look at your code provisions and see if they make exceptions.
Right. Right. Central Valley's still open. We didn't close. Did we close Central Valley?
I remember we closed it open this time.
With the, I remember some planning board meetings, I don't, just swooning, you know, just swooning, feeling as though I can't make a logical decision.
I think we did also.
Literally falling off at what, you know, it was one scene to me. I had something prepared.
Would you hide?
Board business, and my queen had said, my queen had asked me to, go ahead and talk about your project. I was so jealous. I took it.
What do you, which?
I took it. I had, like, five copies. I threw them in the garbage and walked out.
The dogs on the property, you know, we, we...
Talking about attitude.
The other, right, right. So if the other one, it's apparently not.
Without work, looking above, moving the garbage and walked out.
And he's been told, and he's like, screw you.
Yeah, there's my, there's my ideas.
Yeah, but that, his conditions were totally, it was totally...
It may have been a bit hasty that night.
It doesn't extend beyond the front of the road.
Yeah. Yeah. My thing is, if we can, if two people in town are afraid to go to full line, I have a friend who's afraid of cats.
Kind of sure.
I don't want a fence, because I'm...
You've got to realize, you can fence you all around, four foot and six in the back.
Well, that's...
You're right, you will have a privilege.
Oh, absolutely. Everybody, all my neighbors have, for sure.
And frankly, in a lot of communities, you've had that with deer fences, rehabbing prohibition, and the people come in and...
We have a deer, 30 years they didn't jump it. Two years ago, they did.
How tall was it?
In the back, it's six foot. I mean, it's not solid or anything, but, so this year, I mean, since they jumped it and decimated, and we have a pond with a beautiful, had a beautiful stuff, and they ate it, I was going to dig it out. We ended up putting fences around all the stuff in the yard we didn't want eaten during the winters. It was like, oh my God, a fence here, a fence there. They would have to really work at it. But they never came back in.
Okay.
Go figure.
We was waiting for Andrew.
No problem. Okay, so the first one we closed was sofer, right? Okay.
Yes.
How was the machine?
I don't know.
I was about to get something, and I'm like, eh. Anything I get is just not going to be healthy.
All right, all right. So our first one is the sofer application for the fence on Pheasant Run. Should we do the two fences together, since we're probably going to be discussing the same issues?
We could.
And then just issue separate decisions?
Is that acceptable?
Can we do that?
I believe you can, sure.
Okay. So we have two applicants who want a fence for the same reason. They're afraid of dogs. One, however, says the dog only came on the property once. The owner says the dog was very small, but from the pictures that I saw, didn't look too small to me. What do you think, Andrew? It looked like a full grown.
Yeah.
It didn't look like a four-month-old German Shepherd.
But the fence isn't going to solve that.
No, no, no. I'm just saying. And the other one said he has spoken to the owner, and the owner's like, you know, heck with you, I'm going to let my dog run wherever. My thing here is, this is a neighbor and legal thing. If the dog is running loose, they need to call the police, get a paper trail, and let the police and the dog, you know, animal control officer, take care of it. They're welcome to put a fence up.
Four foot half.
They could, right, they can put six foot all around the backyard, solid, if that's what they want, and then have the kids play in the backyard or whatever, and four foot semi-solid in the front. I don't know what your thoughts are. I'm afraid to set a precedent for every kid.
We wouldn't okay that until after...
I would certainly deny these applications because of that.
Well, I'm, you know, if we, if we give fences to two people who, right, if we give fences to two people afraid of dogs, what about the people afraid of cats, or?
Yeah, it's just going to get...
Whatever, I don't know.
I'm confounded as to the criteria for fences. I certainly understand the four litmus test criteria for variances, area variances in general, but trying to understand from application to application.
Oh, oh.
What constitutes true, true need.
Yeah.
If I don't like my neighbor's face, and it truly upsets me to look at him, does that mean that, that I should get a fence?
You have the right to come before our board, Gary, if you don't like your neighbor's face.
And no one can take that away from you.
That is right.
We used to call those spike fences. I want a fence here.
Um...
So I, you know, I'm, I'm...
I really, I don't, they're not going to serve no purpose what they don't...
Well, especially since they're on one side. So if the dog has already been on the property and decides he wants to come back over, all he has to do is walk around the fence.
They want a four-foot fence.
And the chain link fence, the animal control officer told me that...
It's clearly not a barrier. It's not a barrier. They've made that clear.
A German Shepherd could scale a six-foot fence. They've done it at the shelter.
Under extreme duress, yes.
I don't know when or why, or whatever, but, but they, you know, she came...
Again, the applicant was very clear about what she said. She said, I don't want my kids to have to see that. That was clear.
Right. Well, then she needs to build a six-foot fence in the backyard and keep the two-year-old, four-year-old, and five-year-old in the backyard.
Again, if the question was, I want a fence to keep out such and such, that's one thing. But she said, I don't want them to have to see it. So now, now we're granting variances so that people don't have to look at stuff.
We didn't grant the variance yet.
No, but, I mean, that's, that's the request, and I...
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
What kind of criteria is that to grant variances? It's crazy criteria.
It's not, it's not. I, I can't see even why this should have come before the board. I think it should have been something that was taken care of among themselves, or called the police, and let that handle it. It should never have come before us. A zoning board is not the, the zoning board is not the place to solve neighbors' problems.
Yes, I agree.
You know, so, do we have any kind of a motion here?
I think we should have, I recommend that we give a negative, deny their applications for...
That we'll vote on next month.
Prepare decisions to that effect.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
Second here.
Okay. And we'll, all in favor of the negative decision on both of those applications?
Aye.
For, for Mike to draw up the decision.
Correct, yes. Yes, and we'll vote on that next month.
Okay. Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So those are two negative decisions, unfortunately, for the people. Do we need to go through the five points on each one?
Well, I think you did discuss them without specifically, what I heard you say was that the need would not, the need assertion wouldn't be given, wouldn't be taken care of by building the type of fence they wanted.
It doesn't even matter what kind of fence. Will the granting produce an undesirable change? Well, yeah, a fence that goes from back to front, and there's no corner, it's not going to look nice. Can the benefit be achieved by some other feasible method? Sure.
Possibly.
Call, yeah, absolutely. We discussed, okay. How substantial? It's quite substantial, because they're asking for six-foot solid on the side yard. Will the granting have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions? Well, physical, definitely. Is it self-created? Probably not.
Well, in the sense that...
It's a sense that they think this is a solution.
They recently purchased, knowing what the code said.
Yeah, you know. All right, we're all in favor with that. Okay. All right. You closed Central Valley property? We did. We closed that. Okay, so next one is Central Valley property. So they want a variance for less than 10,000 square feet here. Comments before I give mine? Because I have opinions on everything.
You first.
All right. I'm against it, because they just need to reduce two apartments or one use. This isn't a lot coverage area, it's a use. So by reducing the use, you reduce traffic, you reduce, you know, whatever.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily, but I don't see, and they're not even sure they're going to need the third one. He said it himself. Well, you know, we might have all office space. We haven't decided. It was so vague. My opinion. You next, Kevin.
Well, me personally, I don't see, it's not going to change the size of the building. It's not going to change the number of parking spots. It's not going to change the entrance and exit. It's not going to change the number of apartments.
We don't know that either.
Well, no, it won't.
Well, he could reduce by two and be compliant. So we don't know. In other words, if we...
But then he just wouldn't do the third, they just won't do the third option.
Right.
But I think the third option, it might be more beneficial to the people if there's a restaurant or something else that...
He could use it for two uses. I don't know. What do you think?
Karen, my understanding was that if he used it for two uses, he would still put up the same footprint.
Right.
And possibly even the same number of walls.
Exactly.
Possibly.
Right.
Or, or there may be more walls, but the footprint doesn't change. The number of patrons could change with a third use. So without, without that being specific, it's difficult to determine whether that's substantial or not.
Right, because he was, he was Vegas to far, right, he was Vegas as far as what he wanted to use.
I agree. So I'm agreeing with, I'm agreeing with you in terms of aspects of it being potentially substantial, and others being not insubstantial, yes.
Joe, what do you think?
Let me just interrupt you one second. I'm looking, I don't believe that the planning board has yet closed out SECR. Am I, I don't see anything in the file on this.
Oh, on Central Valley?
Yeah, because this is not a type-two action. Did they?
Did the planning board complete SECR on this?
Yes.
I thought so. With shops at Woodbury, that it isn't completed, I know.
Okay. I'll get the date later, then. If it is, you can continue.
Thank you for...
Okay.
Karen, I know the hour is late, but really and truly, for this one, we should go over for all five things. I mean, that's, that's the procedure on it.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. You want me to start with the first question?
Yes, if you would, please.
All right. Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or create a detriment to nearby properties? And the applicant says no. The subject property is located at the Hamlet Business Zoning District HB, with frontage on New York State Route 32 in the Hamlet of Central Valley. This portion of the village consists of a variety of smaller-scale, mixed uses, including retail, restaurants, service, commercial office, and residential uses. The project as proposed promotes the goals and objectives of 2011 Village of Woodbury Comprehensive Plan as follows. Section 432, Housing in the Hamlet Centers. No single housing type shall be allowed to dominate, but rather, efforts should be made to ensure a varied mix. Next one, workforce housing could be constructed above retail stores in the Hamlet Centers at a size and scale that is affordable and attractive. Increased housing density and variety in the Hamlets would also increase the customer base for the shops and services, and result in livelier Hamlet areas. The project as proposed meets these goals and objectives by providing affordable and attractive one- and two-bedroom apartments on a second floor above a commercial within the Hamlet. Section 5.1 goals, to maintain and enhance the integrity of commercial mixed-use neighborhoods throughout Woodbury. My eyes are not working. The project as proposed has been designed in a way to enhance the commercial and mixed-use opportunity within the Central Valley Hamlet. Section 5.2, summary of existing conditions. First one, given the village's interest in designing a community that meets residential needs, land use patterns that carefully integrate dwelling, working, shopping, and learning in the appropriate areas should be implemented. The proposed mixed-use project provides an opportunity to integrate dwelling, working, and shopping within the existing Hamlet. Granting the proposed relief will not result in any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it be a detriment to nearby properties. The applicant will provide an opportunity of mixed uses that would support and be consistent
Again, if the question was, I want a fence to keep out such and such, that's one thing. But she said, I don't want them to have to see it. So now, now we're granting variances so that people don't have to look at stuff.
We didn't grant the variance yet.
No, but I mean, that's, that's the request and I.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
What kind of criteria is that to grant variances? It's crazy criteria.
It's not, it's not. I, I can't see even why this should have come before the board. I think it should have been something that was taken care of among themselves or called the police and let that handle it. It should never have come before us. A zoning board is not the, the zoning board is not the place to solve neighbors' problems.
Yes, I agree.
You know, so, do we have any kind of a motion here?
I think we should have a, I recommend that we give a negative, deny their applications for the variance.
That we'll vote on next month.
I'll prepare decisions to that effect.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second here.
Okay, and we'll all, all in favor of the negative decision on, on both of those applications?
Aye.
For, for Mike to draw up the decision.
Yes, and we'll vote on that next month.
Okay, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Oh, aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So those are two negative decisions, unfortunately for the people. Do we need to go through the five points on each one?
Well, I think you did discuss them without specifically, what I heard you say was that the need would not.
Well, it says undesir-
The need asserted wouldn't be given, wouldn't be taken care of by building the type of fence they wanted.
It doesn't even matter what kind of fence. Will the granting produce an undesirable change? Well, yeah, a fence that goes from back to front and there's no corner, it's just not going to look nice. Can the benefit be achieved by some other feasible method? Sure.
Possibly.
Yeah, absolutely, we discussed, okay. How substantial? It's quite substantial because they're asking for six foot solid on the side yard. Will the granting have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions? Well, physical, definitely. Is it self-created? Probably not.
Well, in the sense that.
It's a sense that they think this is a solution.
They recently purchased, knowing what the, the code said.
Yeah, you know. All right, we're all in favor with that, okay. You closed Central Valley property? We did, we closed that. Okay, so next one is Central Valley property.
Yes.
So they want a variance for less than 10,000 square feet here. Comments before I give mine? Because I have opinions on everything.
You first.
All right. I'm against it because they just need to reduce two apartments or one use. This isn't a lot coverage area, it's a use. So by reducing the use, you reduce traffic, you reduce, you know, whatever.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily, but I don't see, and they're not even sure they're going to need the third one. He said it himself. Well, you know, we might have all office space, we haven't decided, it was so vague. My opinion. You next, Kevin.
Well, me personally, I don't see, it's not going to change the size of the building. It's not going to change the number of parking spots, it's not going to change the entrance and exit. It's not going to change the number of apartments.
We don't know that either.
Well, no, it won't.
Well, he, he could reduce by two and be, be compliant. So we don't know, in other words, if we.
But then he just wouldn't do the third, they just won't do the third option.
Right.
But I think the third option, it may be more beneficial to the, the people if there's a restaurant or something else.
He could use it for two uses. I don't know. What do you think?
Karen, my understanding was that if, if he used it for two uses, he would still put up the same footprint.
Right.
And possibly even the same number of walls.
Exactly.
Possibly.
Right.
Or, or there may be more walls, but the footprint doesn't change. The number of, of patrons could change with a third use. So without, without that being specific, it's difficult to determine whether that's substantial or not.
Right, because he was, he was Vegas to far, right, he was Vegas as far as what he wanted to use.
I, I agree, so I'm agreeing with, I'm agreeing with you in terms of aspects of it being potentially substantial and others being not insubstantial, yes.
Joe, what do you think? Oh, go ahead.
Let me just interrupt you one second, I'm looking, I don't believe that the planning board has yet closed out SECRE. Am I, I don't see anything in the file on this.
Oh, on Central Valley?
Yeah, because this is not a type two action. Did they?
Did the planning board complete SECRE on this?
Yes.
I thought so, with shops at Woodbury, that it isn't completed, I know.
Okay, I'll get the date later then, if it is, you can continue.
Thank you for your advice.
Okay.
Karen, I know the hour is late, but really and truly, for this one, we should go over for all five things. I mean, that's, that's the procedure on it.
You want me to start with the first question?
Yes, if you would, please.
Will the granting of this variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or create a detriment to nearby properties? And the applicant says no. The subject property is located at the Hamlet Business Zoning District HB with frontage on New York State Route 32 in the Hamlet of Central Valley. This portion of the village consists of a variety of smaller scaled mixed uses, including retail, restaurants, service, commercial office, and residential uses. The project as proposed promotes the goals and objectives of 2011 Village of Woodbury Comprehensive Plan as follows. Section 432 Housing in the Hamlet Centers, no single housing type shall be allowed to dominate, but rather efforts should be made to ensure a varied mix. Next one, workforce housing could be constructed above retail stores in the Hamlet Centers at a size and scale that is affordable and attractive. Increased housing density and variety in the Hamlets would also increase the customer base for the shops and services and result in livelier Hamlet areas. The project as proposed meets these goals and objectives by providing affordable and attractive one and two bedroom apartments on a second floor above a commercial within the Hamlet. Section 5.1 Goals, to maintain and enhance the integrity of commercial mixed-use neighborhoods throughout Woodbury. My eyes are not working. The project as proposed has been designed in a way to enhance the commercial and mixed-use opportunity within the Central Valley Hamlet. Section 5.2 Summary of Existing Conditions. First one, given the village's interest in designing a community that meets residential needs, land use patterns that carefully integrate dwelling, working, shopping, and learning in the appropriate areas should be implemented. The proposed mixed-use project provides an opportunity to integrate dwelling, working, and shopping within the existing Hamlet. Granting the proposed relief will not result in any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor will it be a detriment to nearby properties. The applicant will provide an opportunity of mixed uses that would support and be consistent with land use patterns in the Hamlet and consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I would agree with all that.
I agree with all that.
My only concern is that retail is dead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I worry about.
I just wanted to read from the minutes of the 18th. It says at the end of the discussion, Cattagio made a motion for a neg deck of significance under SECRE and it was seconded by someone named Caprigmione.
Thank you, that's April 18th?
Yes.
Someone named Caprigmione.
I think that the project consists with what the comprehensive plan has been looking for all these years. I mean, I think it's a good fit for the community right there. It adds to the, to the business district.
I, I think what I'm always thinking is, okay, zoning goes with the land. So if down the road, somebody else buys it and they decide to put in a third use or whatever that we don't like. I don't know, I, I guess it does. Should we take a vote on this?
It's supposed to, you know, like they, they showed downtown where LeFlore used to be and everything. If that was redone and they had this nice median in the middle of it and so on. So, I mean, it, it's supposed to revitalize and get people more shopping here instead of going over to ShopRite or whatever. So I would agree with the first thing.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about, I guess, the, the overuse of the property.
Well, listen, you never know who's going to rent.
Right, well, I'm looking at the apartments too, I mean, just make it six instead of eight. And he could use all three uses. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, we've had other applicants that wanted certain amount of apartments and we said, well, just reduce them, you don't even need a variance.
You know, people are talking about rental units sitting empty, you know, you're tying their hands. I mean, they'll rent them regardless if it's two uses or three.
You talking apartments or commercial?
No, the apartments, the apartments are the apartments. They're not going to change the size of the building. They're, they're really not, I mean, if they have to go with two uses, they'll go with two uses. I mean, but I don't see what the problem is by allowing a third use. It's kind of what the comprehensive plan wants us to do.
Well, basically, what we're deciding now is will the variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
It's just this. Well, how many different uses are there? There's retail.
Restaurant and office.
Restaurant and office, I mean, that's about all you got.
Is service allowed there? I don't know, is that considered retail?
Well, maybe Verizon, I don't think, if it's service, Verizon or.
It's small business.
Yeah.
Right, small business.
Yeah.
I mean, the likelihood of a restaurant renting there is probably nil to begin with, but.
I don't know, look at the.
You never know.
I actually think you can get a restaurant there, I don't, I don't think the retail's going anywhere.
No.
I, I just.
We're looking for flexibility.
Well, but you can't really tell us what you're looking for now because the public hearing is closed, but we appreciate your concern. Yeah, so really what we're deciding now is the first question, will it produce an undesirable change?
And I agree with that, no.
No.
I, I agree that it will not produce an undesirable change.
I agree.
Joe, what do you think?
I, I agree with what stated in.
Okay, so we're, we're good with number one, we agree with the applicant. Number two, can the benefit you seek, which is the variance, of course, be achieved by some other feasible method other than variance? Yeah, of course it can, well, he even says, yes, the project sponsor can limit the types and number of permitted commercial uses occupying the proposed commercial space. However, it's the opinion of the applicant that limiting potential land uses is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and purpose of the HB District. The proposed project implements the recommendations of the comprehensive plan by providing opportunities for land use diversity. Limiting potential users will not physically change the project appearance or scale. No, it will change the use. I, I agree it won't change the physicality of it. And I agree that, yeah, they could just change the apartments or the, so I agree with the question. Joe?
I agree.
Gary?
Agree.
Okay, so we're all on the same page on that, okay. How substantial is the variance that you're requesting? Um, I wrote that down. Applicant says requested variance is not substantial in relation to the existing land use patterns and within the context of the site. The requested variance is granting the 12% variance will allow flexibility and a variety of potential permitted uses to occupy the commercial portion of the project. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will allow flexibility when marketing the space to end users.
Substantialness is in the, in the eye of the beholder and I consider that vague. In other words, you can't determine how substantial until it's done.
Right.
Yeah, but he's asking for a 12% variance, which is not.
Yeah, but 12% doesn't sound like a lot, but, I don't know, you know.
It's dependent.
Right, it is dependent, I mean, we really don't know.
That could go either way.
The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations, including setbacks, pedestrian links, locating parking in the rear behind the building, landscaping, and architectural design. That has nothing to do with.
Mike, is there, am I misinterpreting the criteria for substantialness, if that's a word?
I think there's different dimensions, 12% certainly is, is most moderately substantial, but I think what, what they're trying to outline here in the submission is, but in terms of its look and in terms of.
That's the question, can substantialness be both qualitative and quantitative?
I think it could be both.
Then, then from a, from a standpoint of quantity, it may not be substantial, but from the standpoint of quality, it could be substantial.
Might be, right.
Yeah, but now you're trying to, you're trying to determine what's going to be in there, I mean.
You don't know.
Well, they don't even know.
They don't even know.
That's the problem I'm having, that it's so vague.
I agree.
But it's only a 12% variance, which is minor by comparison to most variances. And 12% is not bad.
Right, right.
If it was 50%, then you.
You won't even see. I, I don't, I don't disagree.
12% is, is really hardly nothing.
And it all depends on what goes in there.
Right.
You know what I mean? If, if you lose a use because nobody wants to do it there, then you, you come into compliance, right? Am I?
If someone wants to open up a Chinese restaurant in there.
Hey, there's already one down the block, there's two in this town.
I'm just saying that as a.
Yeah, yeah, like we need a third one, big guy.
Maybe a deli.
Always thinking with a stomach, even at these hours of the night.
Number four.
Are we agreeing on number three? That it's, it's a minor?
It's a minor.
I'm on the fence on that, but, because it could be iffy, but doesn't matter, you guys are the majority.
No, I, I don't know on that one, I don't, I just don't know.
I don't either, yeah. Will the granting of the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district? No, the applicant says, granting the requested variance will result in the construction of a mixed-use building substantially consistent with the Village Comprehensive Plan, zoning ordinance, and surrounding land uses. The land uses within the vicinity of the site are comparable in size and magnitude with regard to structures and requisite site improvements. The proposed project will include parking, size, site lighting, stormwater management facilities, and extensive landscaping plan. Therefore, the proposed improvements are consistent with similar land uses and will benefit the neighborhood and village as a whole. No adverse effects or impacts upon physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood will occur. Granting the variance will not alter the project or appearance or scale. They say that every, they end that with every sentence, every, everyone just ended with that. I don't know, was there a traffic study done? And? What did Joe?
It didn't seem to be a problem, the planning board has it.
They issued a negative declaration.
For the traffic?
Well, it would have included traffic.
Okay.
There is, traffic would be my concern, to be totally honest with you.
That's my, my biggest concern there.
I was across the street from that waiting to come out of Dundenberg and into Estrada, and there was four cars there and the light was, you know, being the way, it takes.
Oh, forever.
An eternity to go from green to red.
I hope they change that.
And then it got six cars, and by the time the light changed and I went across the street, there was nine cars there. And this was at two o'clock in the afternoon. So the one concern, if I remember correctly, that they voiced was the lining up.
Yeah.
Going back during the peak hours.
And trying to get out of that driveway when the cars are lined up.
They did say something about not being able to make a left-hand turn in and they, they did consider that, so, but it is a concern at the planning board.
I just wish they would build around that tree, that would be a nice.
Yeah, instead of taking it down.
Hundred-year-old tree over there.
That's a beautiful tree.
Yeah.
Try to get out of any side road in, in Woodbury today, it's not.
I know, but we're.
Traffic has become an issue all, all over town.
Look, I don't even have a traffic lane, I can't get out of a Moffees building at night at 4:30 because of all the traffic.
Will the granting have an adverse effect?
I could sit there 15 minutes some nights.
That's because you're an old man and you don't want to push it, hit the pedal, go.
No, they come too fast. Number five.
Do we all agree on number four, that there is no adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions?
I disagree on that.
I got a little bit with the traffic, I, I, I know they said, but I, 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 I know better.
But I don't know that the traffic is, is that part of our.
Environmental, I mean, but, but in the sense that the territory is closed out, it can't be.
But, but, right, well, that's when, yeah.
I would say it has the potential to impact, but I can't say that that impact would be substantial.
Yeah, I don't see, it's so many unknowns, I don't know. Will the granting have an adverse effect, right.
I'm just glad I don't live on Estrada.
No, but the point, the point is, it's not going to double the traffic in Central Valley.
No, no, no.
Unless you live on Estrada. Try getting out of there.
I'll use, I'll come up Smith Close.
Let's take a, let's take a vote on this one. Joe, will the granting have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions by allowing them the extra use?
I have to say somewhat, all right, I, I can't be more definitive than that.
Yeah, that's basically what I was saying.
Flip a coin, maybe?
Somewhat.
Somewhat.
I don't know if she can put that down.
Gary, what do you think?
No.
Kevin?
I don't think so.
Andrew?
I'm going to say yes.
And I'm going to say somewhat.
And I don't say somewhat, so we got, what did you say?
Somewhat, I don't know because I, there's so many unknowns, so it's, there's.
And two noes.
Two noes and one yes and two somewhats.
That is funny.
Is the alleged difficulty self-created?
The Greenwood Lake ZBA is laughing at all that.
I love this. No, the comprehensive plan recommends mixed uses to be developed within the Hamlet, which includes banks, offices, medical offices, service establishments, funeral homes, restaurants, retail, blah, 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 blah. The comprehensive plan also recognizes revitalization of the Hamlets as one of its major goals. How is this answering the question? From an economic and community perspective, the establishment of these variable areas would provide needed goods and services to local residents. The zoning, how is this answering whether it's self-created?
It's not supposed to, what it's supposed to do is just, it's just mumbo jumbo and then you're supposed to like squirrel.
It would have been the responsibility of the owner to understand what the limitations are when he bought the property, so yes.
It is self-created, they're asking for something, right.
But they're all yes.
Usually, but.
Pretty much.
But this is quite a.
And you figured the.
There's another paragraph of the same thing. I say yes, it is self-created. Because they could easily reduce one use or apartments and, you know.
And if you guys have, if you, I don't know whether Mike has read this lately.
That doesn't preclude us from approving it.
No, no, the amount of commercial business is skyrocketing.
In what, Woodbury?
In, in the county and the state.
It will when these five uses go.
I'm serious.
Everybody's moving out of New York.
Listen, our building is full. Bagel Boys is full.
All right, so basically, we have to decide, the first three we all agreed on with the applicant. So let's look at four and five, four and five, five is self-created, but that doesn't preclude us, so really, we're looking at number four.
Well, we should be looking at number three.
We all agreed that it.
Because it's a minor variance.
Well.
12% is minor.
I think it's.
No.
Moder, well, we don't know, it's one of those somewhats.
No, no, you can't, you can't say you don't know.
Can I say somewhat?
I just did.
You can't try to figure out what will be the worst scenario there. To me, 12% is a minor variance for this project.
Well.
I mean, you guys vote, they're going to build it anyhow, so.
Right, I'm not looking at the footprint, I'm looking at the use, it's the use that, that concerns me.
What's the difference?
I, what's the difference? Okay, let's say, um, let's say a dry cleaner goes in there, all right?
Okay.
Okay, so you drop your stuff off, you drop, you know.
It's not a question to count how many people go in and out of there.
That's the use, that's what I'm looking at. Like, let's say it was a dance school, did you ever try to park here when that dance school's in session? You can't get a parking spot, you know?
All right.
So that's what I, no, that's what I'm, right, but that's what I'm looking at, so should I not be looking at that?
Well.
I don't know.
Multiple uses are allowed, remember what the variance is for, it's for lot area.
Right.
And, and.
But, but it's, but they're asking for three uses as opposed to two, let's say.
So there's some minor increase in the intensity that might be allowed on the site, and that clearly could have somewhat of, of, of an impact on the physical and environmental strata.
Right, but is it enough, I guess, is it enough to deny?
But it's only 12%.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, well, you're saying only 12%, I'm saying it is 12%. Joe, what do you think? You're very quiet.
50% is, is, is a major variance.
Oh, absolutely.
12% isn't.
Well, it also, it always depends, you know, what we're looking at.
You just don't want no one else, you just don't want no restaurants there.
No restaurants, no, I didn't say that. No, I don't. Joe, what do you think?
We're on a 12% variance at number four about the environmental.
Number three, number three, how substantial is the variance? It's 12%, is that enough to?
I don't think, as I said when we did cover this the first time, it all depends on what the usage is in the building. I, I don't want to belabor that point, but if they only have two out of three uses, it's, doesn't need the variance to begin with. So, you know, it could go in and out of compliance with, with things, it could be sometimes 78,000, sometimes it could go back down to 68 or something like that, so I would say it's small.
But on the assumption that all of them are going to be there, but I.
Right, we're just assuming that all the time.
But that's the mathematical one, I think, what you said earlier, but in terms of the, the quality of the substantiality, you wouldn't see anything different on the street.
Exact, correct. I, I would say it's minor, I agree with Kevin.
Oh, no, as far as the building goes, we wouldn't.
I agree with Kevin.
You agree with Kevin that 12% is a minor variance? Okay, Gary, what do you think?
Well, I agree with Joe, who agrees with Kevin.
If it changed the size of the building, then it would be something to think about, but it's not going to change nothing.
I agree with, with Joe, who agrees with Kevin, no, I'll agree with Gary, who agrees with Joe, who agrees with Kevin.
Well said.
Well put, there we go.
And it probably is a minor variance. I'm probably overthinking it.
No, you're not overthinking it, I get where you're coming from.
All right, number four. We did?
Yeah.
No, we had.
I had, I had a decision on that, you guys came up with some.
No, 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 we did it, but is it, what, what we're deciding is, is it enough to?
I concluded that it was self-created.
No, that's number five. Number four is this, we got the yes, one yes, two somewhats. Could have an impact.
It could have an impact, could have, would have, should have.
Can't be significant.
Karen, I'm afraid that the applicant is going to have us declared incompetent.
Well, they're going to have to do it another day because it's getting near midnight.
You're darn right.
All right, so do I have a motion for this?
I'd like to give them, I'd like, I would like to make a motion to give a positive.
To grant the variance.
To grant the variance.
I'll, I'll second that.
Wait, 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 we didn't vote yet. All right, Joe.
I vote aye. Look, we just had a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, we're done, going through it.
So I'm just going through it, Gary, you're good with this?
Yes.
Kevin? Of course, Andrew? Okay, so it really won't matter what I, what I say. Right, right, I'll just have to think about it for a month.
I might have missed it, I didn't see the county's report in the file, but you're not voting on the decision, only in the preparation of it, I'm sure we'll have it in our comments.
Okay, right, right, we'll vote, we, we're, this is not the decision, this is just the draft that we vote on at the next meeting.
Thank you.
All righty.
Wait till you get my bill. 11:20.
My goodness.
I'm missing two and a half hours of sleep already.
I'm close enough. You have to admit, I was right.
You know tomorrow I am going to be really cranky.
Say it, I was right.
Woodview Heights.
Woodview Heights.
Woodview Heights, wow, this is a, I'm torn on this one. I've got a lot of, a lot of issues with it, you know, part of me. Part of me says, well, you know, a homeowner should be able to, I mean, a property owner should be able to develop their property. However, there were codes in place when they bought the property, I know they had preliminary approval, but we also had zone, have zoning that is in place for a reason. I mean, we didn't just decide one day, gee, slopes and wetlands are nice words, we should put them into our code. There was a reason, you know, for the benefit of people who were buying property, buying a house which has slopes and wetlands.
Empirical reasons.
Right. I'm also looking at this property, I've walked part of it, it was mushy, the part that I walked, I walked by the water tank from Fillmore. I walked by the water tank from Fillmore. I couldn't walk far, my arthritic knees wouldn't take me, and I had white shoes on, too, so.
White shoes?
White, yeah, well, I didn't know I was going to walk, but.
You're not supposed to do white until after Memorial Day.
Oh, oops. Well, they're not white anymore, so I'm good. It's a lot of up and down. But I don't think we're allowed to address that because, well, the wetland part, I guess we are. It bothers me, they're building a road over a wetland, but you can't put a house on a wetland.
He did explain that, though.
I know he did, that it's, I know.
You know, I mean, it doesn't even have to be mitigated according to what Mr. Locke said.
Yeah, because it's such a small area. So, we're looking at these, what, five lots, six lots that have slopes, six lots? Five for slope and six for wetland or vice versa?
But six total that.
Right, right, five for slope and six for wetland. Okay, what do we consider a significant variance? Remember, we said 12% was minor. You just said it on the last one.
Karen, excuse me, can I make a point to you?
But it depends what we're talking about.
But now your time's in it by sex.
Can I make, can I make?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Sorry. I'm kind of distraught that, I thought that Dennis would be here to address a lot of the questions that I know I had, and I believe I heard other board members say that they had technical questions as well that Dennis would help to iron out. I did read the memo, but it wasn't enough information, in my opinion, for me to vote either way. So, I am keeping an open mind both ways, but I personally don't have enough information here, not being able to speak with Dennis to vote one way or the other.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Questions answered.
Sure, you have 62 days, you can bring Dennis in the next meeting.
And then discuss it.
With him.
Would we discuss it at a public, would it be public?
Yeah, I believe it should be public.
So, Gary, did you hear that? Would you be open to keeping?
I think it's too late to call it out.
It's not, it wouldn't be a public hearing, right? Because we closed the public hearing.
Yeah, but no, it's a public meeting.
Meeting, but, but people are not going to be speaking.
I wouldn't recommend that you want to, you want to get the advice of the engineer based upon everything you've heard from the public.
Advice and clarification is what I'm.
But, of course, the attorney could be here.
Oh, yeah.
The applicant could be here, and they can answer questions that you might have.
We're thinking about you.
Jay, if you're nice, we'll let you come.